Hello, I'd like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. It is 5:31 and I'm going to turn it over to Ashley with SSW Consulting to work on our goals and objectives refinement. Sorry, for the record, please show that Councilor Guffston, Council President Rippey, Councilor Martinez, Councilor Marshall are in attendance, Council Ewing's in attendance on Zoom, and absent unexcused is Councilor Valenzuela. Okay, go ahead, Ashley.
All right, good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great, wonderful. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for your great work on Saturday to inform your goals and objectives for 2024. It's good to see you all again. Tonight, I'm going to take you through a few slides where we're going to recap how those, that discussion was, how that discussion resulted in the proposed goals and objectives. So what that's going to look like, we are going to review your values, your goals and objectives, and then we'll also have some time to share any additional items for discussion and consideration to be added to new objectives. And then there was interest by the council to discuss potential assignments of objectives to boards and commissions, so we'll discuss that as well. And if we have time, I've prepared a live polling exercise to prioritize the objectives, and that's what Mariah has just sent out to you, that you can click on that link directly when we get to that point in the evening. So we do have an ambitious agenda with a lot to cover, but hopefully we can get to that prioritization exercise. So just a moment, I am going to share my screen. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll review the values, goals, objectives, and discuss any proposed additions, and discuss assignments for boards and commissions if there are any that the council would like to make those assignments. So I'll start with the values. So previously in 2023, you had three values, financial stewardship, community engagement, and equity, diversity, and inclusion. One of the, through the results of the discussion at the retreat, there was a proposal to add strategic planning to that list, and so with additional context being that we are dedicated to proactive long-term planning that anticipates evolving political, economic, and environmental conditions. And so just as a reminder, the values serve as a role through which staff, excuse me, the values serve as a lens through which staff implement your goals and objectives. And so before we move forward, are there any questions or discussion around the values, or is there consensus to move forward with these values?
Is there consensus? Can I get like a thumbs up or consensus to move forward?
Okay, great. All right, so for 2024 goals, there are four goal areas. Address the long-term growth and support, address long-term growth and support housing stability, plan an inclusive and sustainable community, improve community safety, and sustain recreation opportunities for all.
Councilor Rippey.
Excuse me. I thought during, on Saturday, we had on the fourth one, remove or replace the word recreation with quality of life, so that it is more inclusive and expanding rather than just recreation.
Yes, so that was something that we discussed during the retreat, and as I was working with staff and reflecting on the goal language versus what the outcomes, associated outcomes are with each goal, that quality of life and supporting livability and quality of life for all is felt more of an outcome of sustaining the recreational opportunities, and that quality of life can sometimes be interpreted very broadly into, perhaps into some like social services, which would be outside of the services that the City of Forest Grove provides. And so the proposal would be to keep it at the recreation, and then have the quality of life be one of the specific outcomes of this goal.
If I could maybe add to that, I think part of it was also kind of what's defined as recreation. And recreation, I think, can include a host of different activities, whether it's activities occurring at the senior center, activities that are occurring within our parks, that are provided by nonprofits. So I think what staff was kind of looking for was maybe if quality of life is used as the goal, as opposed to the outcome, then maybe a little bit more definition about that, like kind of what the council was trying to get at by suggesting quality of life, if there was something active about that, if there was something specific about that that you may want us to have as an objective, or if the quality of life is the outcome, if that's intended to be, you know, by doing recreation opportunities for everyone, regardless of age and, you know, those types of things, if that is getting at what the council wanted, and quality of life improvement is the outcome.
Councilor Ewing.
So I have to kind of agree with Tim on this, in that recreation has, in my opinion, when I think of recreation, and when most people, I believe, think of recreation and have talked to me about it, it really isn't about the senior center, it isn't about those equity type of issues, it's really about physical or activities of recreation. So I think unless we really define what recreation is, and I think that that's not really the right term for this, I would rather have it say something like sustain equity opportunities for all. Then we go further into the objectives of defining what that equity means, whether it's sustainable recreation, whether it is senior services, I think that's to me a better layout than sustain recreation for all. Thank you.
I like this one, sustain recreation opportunities for all. If, you know, we go back a year when we had the last election cycle, that was the number one topic, was recreation. We passed the levy two years ago, hiring a recreation coordinator. I think that, I think the intent that I heard on Saturday was, you know, making sure recreation opportunities met the needs of multiple groups of people, and I think that's where the for all comes into play, but it's still recreation, whether it's a cooking class, a quilting class, adult volleyball, or badminton book clubs, like those are still recreational activities, and we are funding them, and there's a desire by the community to see those. So I think we need to use that word. Councilor Martinez and Councilor Guffston.
So I did look at the definition. It says, this is from the American Heritage Dictionary, first one that popped up, refreshment of one's mind or body after work through activity that amuses or stimulates play, and activity that provides such refreshment. I mean, any kind of recreation, I would think, as the mayor pointed out, could fit under recreation, anything that gets you away from any kind of work, or, yeah, lets you just downtime, other activities.
I agree, I brought up the definition too. I like it how it is, sustain recreation opportunities for all. I think that that covers all recreation, and it covers everybody regardless of age or ability. I like it how it is.
Okay, so, I mean, are we, I need some consensus moving forward, are we okay with?
I'll just add my comments, you know, I'm not going to quibble over semantics, but again, I don't see where classes for parenting, classes for CPR, classes for those kinds of things that can be done at the senior center or places like that constitutes recreation. So I, my, the whole idea that I had here was to expand people's understanding perception of what it is that we're trying to achieve, and in the discussions that we had at the different tables, it seemed to me to be more inclusive than just the kinds of activities that are intended for, you know, outside in the park and things like that. So I'm not, I'm not going to go along with whatever the council wants, but I do think that it's important that staff and council understand the broader aspect of it and not what most people perceive the term recreation to mean.
Is there any way that we can include, because I understand what you're saying, recreation is recreation, whether that's playing chess or throwing the ball around the field. But this other, this other type of workshops that prepare people for different things like CPR or something like that, is there any way, a place where we can add that?
Well, I, go ahead.
So two things, one, we have to decide what this is going to be, I think that's the first thing. Is it going to be specific to recreation, and that is, that's not education, that's separate from education, separate from work, or learning new things to enhance your work or, you know, higher ability? So I think we need to decide what we want this to be. If we do want it to be blended with other classes, that would be sustain recreation and enrichment opportunities for all, but again, those are two separate things.
So I think we're getting away, I like it the way it is, and I would like to keep it separate. I think that if you looked at the objectives, I think we shouldn't, if you looked at the objectives that came under this goal, the master plan, the working together, the fee structure, like those are, that's, we have to get those objectives met. I think that, I heard Council Rippey give an example of an objective, like saying, when do we do that? If we're looking for, I think, A, that's already operationalized, and it has been even prior to hiring, yeah, I mean, the fire department does it, the Aquatic Center does it with their babysitting class, so I think it's already there. I think that, and I don't think that this is, the objectives and the goals are like what we're working towards, not what we've, we already do those classes, we already do those things, so I don't think we need to change a goal to fit something we already do. Like, we're building a recreation program, like that, the voters pass the levy to build recreation, and if we don't have a goal that talks about sustaining the recreation opportunities, then I feel like we're letting down our voters. That's Councilor Guffston.
So I'll go back again to, if this is a goal, there should be an end in sight. Sustain recreation opportunities for all is, there is no end in sight, that is forever. So if we have something to finish on this goal, then we need to reword this to something different that's not just sustain is operational. You throw that word in there at all.
Build a sustainable recreation.
Finalize, how much do we have left, really?
We have.
Just the fees.
It seems like we have a lot.
Yeah, the whole philosophy over the fee structure, I think, is the last piece of that big pie, isn't it, that we haven't finished yet?
Why don't we just say create recreation opportunities for all? Because we haven't done that yet. I mean, I'm just, if we want to like, but I'm also want to be, you know, Council Ewing, we have 30 minutes, and we're still on slide two, so I'm a little bit, okay, Council Ewing.
Well, first of all, I don't think this is necessary that we rush these things, I think it's much more necessary that we come up with consensus on this. I think that create is fine, I think that recreation in the broad sense is fine, but I also like the term enhance opportunities, enhancement of opportunities for all. I think that then that would take beyond the recreational that we're talking about, but the actual classes and the other opportunities that are available, because while I know that this is what the community wanted, I still, again, believe that the word recreation becomes confusing.
Okay, so are there other comments from council?
I have Council Rippey and Council Guffston that are giving me the look like they want to talk.
I think, I'm a little leery saying that the people supported the levy, but what we took to the levy was recreation program. I can almost guarantee you that those parents out there with kids with disabilities were not supporting that levy for their kids, because recreational programs tend not to include them, and that is the group of people that I am trying to have a voice for and protect. Those people also ought to have the opportunities for recreation, for engagement, for those kinds of things, and I don't think we're getting there with a broad term like this. That's my personal feeling, but I'll go along again with whatever the council says.
Councilor Guffston.
I think enhance recreation opportunities for all covers, for me, both things, the fact that it's specific to recreation, we have opportunities for all, because, so that covers everybody, and we are enhancing, we're not sustaining, obviously, because we're going to continue sustaining till we all die, but enhancing, I feel more comfortable with.
I'll go along with that.
Do I have consensus with that?
Okay.
Okay, Ashley, go ahead.
All right, so what I'm hearing, that there's consensus to have it, to change the language of this goal to enhance recreation opportunities for all, yes? Okay, all right, let's go on to the next slide.
Really quick while you're switching slides, I agree with Council Ewing, and I don't mean to add pressure about these goals, but I've been reading the charter a lot in the last year, and we have to approve our goals and objectives by this, according to the charter, by the second meeting in March. We only have one meeting in March, it's our next meeting. So that's why I feel pressure to get through this tonight, is because according to our charter, we have to approve our goals and objectives by March 18th. Okay, go ahead, Ashley.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, I wanted to check in before we go over the objectives, if there is anything that we missed in the retreat that council might want to have a, that council might want to have discussion, have a potential objective on. So I just wanted to, again, we have our, you know, tight on time during this meeting, but wanted to lend a few minutes to this discussion.
Yeah, I'm really interested in exploring a biennial budget and retreat process. A lot of, I've been at LOC conferences and other mayors and cities, I've been talking a lot, and a lot of cities are doing two-year budgets and retreats, goals and objectives, and I think it would be a really good idea for Forest Grove to do that, because I feel like we put a lot of pressure on department heads and staff every year, and I think it would alleviate some of their pressure, so they could carry out our objectives. So I would like to explore that as an objective.
Is there any discussion on that from council, or is there consensus to move that forward as an objective?
I agree. I'm seeing some head nods here.
All right, okay, I'm, all right, then we will add that as an objective.
My only question, this would be for staff, is are we not required to have a balanced budget each year? And if that is a requirement by law, doing it every two years, is there a way to address that? Thank you.
Paul.
And we can address that as part of the exploration, but essentially you still have a balanced budget by year, you would just adopt a two-year budget, and then you make, for the second year, there would always be some budget adjustments you would make going into it.
Okay. All right, are there any other items for discussion on potential additional objectives before we move on to the objective, presenting the draft objectives?
I don't see any.
Okay, all right, so in 2023, council had 23 objectives under your four goals, and in 2024, there would be 18, and so I have them listed on two pages, there wasn't enough room on one, on one slide to add it all. And the reason that they're listed this way and not by goal is because due to the short time turnaround from the retreat to tonight, it allows staff the opportunity to figure out where best these objectives fall under the goals, to support each goal area, because they needed to be moved around a little bit. But I want to walk council through all of the goals and then have discussion about about the objectives. So, one, develop an urban reserve concept plan to evaluate a growth strategy. Two, lobby the state, county, and metro to develop a small city affordable housing policy that ensures the equitable distribution of funds and resources. Three, update the comprehensive plan. Four, develop a climate action plan. Five, develop a diversity, equity, and inclusion toolkit or lens to evaluate policies and programs. Develop a 2040 vision and action plan. Update the economic opportunities analysis. Complete the city charter review process. Update the economic development strategy or strategic plan. Evaluate funding options to clarify and implement the urban renewal plan. Make a decision regarding fire district governance. Complete alternatives analysis for a northern fire station and select a preferred alternative fire station. Update and improve, excuse me, update and approve the emergency operations plan. Complete the East Side Park Plan. Develop the Forest Grove Loop Trail Master Plan. Complete the development of Kyle Park. Complete the Parks and Recreation Fee Study and ensure long-term funding structure for the Fund for All Fund, and update the Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan.
I would propose that we remove objective 12 for right now, because I think you can't, we shouldn't really do 12 until we make a decision regarding fire district governance. I don't want to go do all this work on a fire station if we end up with a district.
Is there consensus on the council to remove 12?
No, not at all, not for me. I think that we're going to get relatively soon some firm guidance as to which direction we're going to go with regard to that, so the Fire Services Task Force is going to be able to provide some more definitive guidance here shortly, so I think that we should continue to leave that in there.
I'm good with us leaving it on. If, I would like to tell the task force what the City of Forest Grove would like to do, and then have you go and tell the task force. So as long as we have a work session about the options with the task force within the next couple months, and we have a consensus, then I'm fine leaving it on. Council Ewing.
Yes, I'd like to go back, I think it's objective three, and have a discussion about the wording of that.
Okay, before we do that, are we, do we have consensus on leaving objective 12 in then with that additional context? Okay.
I think so.
Okay, it's number two, it's number two, excuse me. So we're talking about lobbying the state, county, metro to develop a small city's affordable housing policy. I think that we're limiting ourselves by saying a affordable housing policy, because at the table, when we were discussing this, we were talking about small city policies, because we often get forgotten. I think if we just do affordable housing policy, that's all that our lobbying efforts are going to focus on. I would like to remove the affordable housing and have it just say lobby state, county, and metro to develop small city policies that ensures equitable distribution of funds and resources.
How does the council feel about that? I agree, I think that's, the conversation was about some of the challenges small cities have, small cities within the metro, so it's not just about affordable housing, it's about lots of, like, our urban reserves and different things. So I'm in support of removing affordable. I see, yes, I see head nods, so there's consensus for that.
All right, great, so we'll change that to lobby the state, county, and metro to develop a small city policy that ensures the equitable distribution of funds and resources. Can make that change. Are there any other questions or proposals for amendments or additional refinements with these objectives? And I can go to the next slide as well.
I did have one for council's consideration, but I'll wait till the next slide or?
Yes, no, I can move it.
Go ahead, Jesse.
If you could go to the next slide, Ashley, just a kind of a clarification, complete the development of Kyle Park. If that's a one-year objective, that's not attainable. If that's a two- or three-year objective, then that is attainable. The process where we're at right now is we're doing the concept plan, so I think it was intended to say complete the concept plan for Kyle Park.
Correct. I agree, because that's, I mean, the East Side Park, there's lots of things, so it cannot be. But it should say, complete the concept plan for Kyle Park.
Okay. All right, and just to check in, is there majority or consensus, I mean, council? Okay. Okay, so we'll change that to complete the concept plan for Kyle Park for objective 16.
Would that also apply to number 14 then, complete the concept plan for East Side Park?
Yes, it would be better phrased that way, it says the East Side Park Plan, but it's intended to be a concept plan, so Council Rippey's correct, it would be, from apples to apples, it would be complete the concept plan for the East Side Park.
Complete the concept plan for East Side Park.
And I guess a question for clarification is that when we see this list of objectives next month, it's going to include a column of which department is responsible, a column of years, a column.
Yep, and the responsible director.
Okay.
Just to expand a little bit, some of these have to be actually sequenced, and so that timing will be in accordance with the sequence of the objectives.
All right, are there any other questions about the objectives or additional proposed refinements, or are we, do we have consensus to move forward with the objectives as we've discussed?
There's consensus to move forward.
Okay. Great, all right, I'll go to the next slide. So there was interest expressed by council on Saturday to have a discussion around boards and commissions, so I'd like to ask council, do you have any objectives that you would like to assign to a board or commission?
Can we, yeah, can we go back to those objectives? Thank you.
Yeah. I was really testing your memory.
So if I could maybe just add a little bit of context, some of these will, kind of by default, go to a board and commission. So economic opportunities analysis will go to EDC, charter review is obviously the charter review committee, urban reserve concept plan would be the planning commission, so I think the ones that aren't kind of by default going to a board or commissioner are the ones that I think we're looking for some feedback on.
I would be more comfortable, sorry, but I'm going to hop in here, I would be more comfortable not to do this this evening, I'd be more comfortable if the staff went back and put together the ones that must go with the certain objectives, so that we have an idea of really what we're looking at before we start assigning, and I don't know that that necessarily has to happen in this work session, that we're assigning particular boards and commissions, because it may be more than one. So I would prefer that we do this exercise. So I would prefer that we do this exercise at a different time. Just identifying which of the objectives have hard place boards and commissions that are responsible. Thank you.
Counsel Rippey.
Yeah, I, I agree with Counsel Yuen. I, I think that a little bit more thought can be put into, into this. I, I do agree. I think I'd like to see staff come back and say this particular one, we need a little bit more clarification on. We actually think a board and commission can help with some of this. But, but just trying to guess that off the top of my head. You know, the only one that sticks out to me, though, is the one on the climate plan. I mean, I can see in two weeks from now, the staffer is going to say, what did everybody mean by that climate plan? What's involved in that? What's the definition? So who do we assign that to? And if we assign it to a, say, a task force, like the sustainability task force, then we need to, we need to have a very narrowly defined scope. When we do a task force, you have to have a defined scope and a timeline. And, and just to say that we're going to do an action plan like this, there's, there's no boundaries around it for people to, to work on. So I think that one in particular needs to be looked at closer by both staff and us. But Jesse's right in the sense that a lot of them are just going to go to board and commission as part of ordinary business.
Any other comments on that? Ashley, are you okay if we wait to do that in a different work session or?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, but we do have time for the prior, like, I don't know what you have next on your.
Yes, I think that that brings us to the prioritization exercise, and so and I will add, I can add the, the, the objective around a biennial budget and retreat process. And so as I'm updating that on, on my side, if council, if you want to go into your email that Mariah sent you, there should be a link there. And you can click on that link and it'll open Mentimeter, which is our live polling software that we use. And so you'll open it and it'll ask you to enter your name. So that's your first, first question, and that just ensures that everyone is connected and logged in.
Brian, is your?
And then we can go through the exercise.
Brian, is your hand raised? No, never mind. It was the little cursor with that. That's a hand, just to confuse the mayor. Does not take much.
Okay. All right, so while you're doing that, I'm just going to update on my side just, just a moment. Okay.
I entered myself twice, you can take one out. Thing is not necessarily intuitive.
Oh, done, isn't there twice? Okay. No, that's all right. As long as you're just, as long as you're just doing the exercise once, it should be okay. All right, let me just count. Do we have everyone?
I don't know.
Yes, we have seven. Okay, so the, so the way that this works is I have the objectives organized under goal areas that reflected where they were in the 2023 goals. So knowing that these goals, these objectives may move around to the different goal areas. Just so, just to keep that in mind for context, but for simplicity for the exercise and also to just help make it a little more clear, they are listed by the 2023 goal areas or the goal areas that we discussed during the retreat. And so what you will do is that in each goal area on your screen, you'll be able to drag these objectives up into the prioritization area, and then you can rank them. So one is listed as the highest. And so it's live polling, so you can, everyone can do it at the same time, and then the screen will reflect the results. And then you can see it, it continues to update as more people complete their ranking. And so down in the corner, so we've received rankings from three people. And so once we receive rankings from seven, then, then we can move on to the next goal. So then you can see.
So Ashley, I'm not getting to the ranking part. I've got my name in. We get to the next one, which is address long-term growth and housing, but when I try to put my ranking in or tap for the available rankings, it isn't coming up.
You should be able to like select the objective and drag it up into the space above.
Okay. Okay, now I've lost everything. Oh my God, I hate technology. Okay, let me see what I can do here again.
You can always ask Tim to vote twice.
Okay, so what is it that I'm holding? It says your ranking, tap or drop options. I don't. So what am I doing?
Grab the three, grab, so underneath you have the three objectives. Select it or push your finger on it, or if you have a mouse, select it and then move it up. And then once you move them up, there's arrows up or down. So number one.
Oh, okay, I get, I get, I get. Okay, let me see what I can do.
Perfect.
I get it, okay.
Has, has everybody else been able to figure out the technology piece? Because I see that I have four, four votes. Okay, there's one more. And then I'll just, as you're voting, I'll just include this context that this exercise is, it's not, you know, a vast, you know. It, well, I'll say it this way, it, it's a data point for staff to help inform how they implement the goals and how they think about the time, the associated timelines and phasing of the work. All right, so it looks like we have, all the votes are in. So top priority would be to develop an urban reserve concept plan and evaluate a growth strategy, followed by lobby, the lobbying objective, and then third for update the comprehensive plan. Okay, let's go on to the next goal. Next goal is plan and inclusive and sustainable community. I know this one, the font might be, font size might be a little bit small because there's so, so many objectives, but hopefully you can read that. And you'll know I included the explore biennial budget and retreat process within this goal. It might not necessarily live here, but decided to put it in because it, it's a nice way to compare against these other objectives, since there's so many in this particular goal area.
Hmm.
Looks like we've heard from four so far, so maybe a couple, I know this one's the longest one, maybe a couple more minutes on this one. Looks like we've heard from four so far, so maybe a couple, I know this one's the longest one, maybe a couple more minutes on this one. All right, maybe just about one more minute. Okay, so we have all the votes in for the ranking for this one. And I'll send the results after the, to staff after this presentation, so you have a reporting over the rankings as well. All right, so let's go to the next goal, improve community safety. Okay. All right, and then we'll move on to our last goal. And I will update the language for the, for the goal areas we discussed earlier this evening. Also, the objectives will reflect the changes that in amendments for refinement, the different changes in the refinements as well in the final version. Just not able to update all of them in advance. It'll take maybe one more minute. And we'll have all the votes in.
Ashley, I think maybe somebody.
Yes, do we, does every, has every?
And thinks.
Oh, okay, I'm checking, I'm just, I'm wanting to not rush anybody, but I'm like, we have six. Did everyone get a chance to vote?
It was probably me, I didn't hit.
Somebody clicked the like button.
There it goes. Okay. Here we go, now we're at seven, all right. I know, I don't want to, don't want anyone to feel rushed. All right, so that's, here are the results for the, the last goal area. Thank you so much for, for playing along in our, you know, fun technology live polling. Hopefully that was helpful for you to provide a little bit more information around the priorities on council. And as I mentioned, I will send these results to staff after this presentation, so everyone has record of the rankings as well. And then before we close, are there any other discussions or questions or comments? Our, our next steps are that I will continue to work with Jesse and staff to finalize your summary report and get this to you for your final approval in March.
Yeah, I think we're good. Thank you so much, Ashley. And to tell Sastra, thank you too, her, for her sound effects on Saturday and spending so many hours with us in the last couple of days, so we appreciate it.
Yes, our pleasure. We love working with your team and we're excited to get this all wrapped up for you so that you can post it and share it with your community. So thank you so much.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to adjourn this work session. And I'm going to call to order our next work session at 6:19. The topic is Council Creek Regional Trail. Members of the city council are present, city staff, and a few Parks and Rec Commission members in the audience and our library director as well. Okay, Greg, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. This evening, we're going to give you a brief update on the happenings surrounding the Council Creek Regional Trail. For the last couple of years, it's been an ongoing adventure between a consortium of four partnering agencies, five, and we're getting into the real meat and potatoes of the, the design as well as some important questions that we're going to pose to council tonight to get a position on where we're at. So, next slide, please. This is our agenda. I'm going to give you a little bit of background, an overview of the project, current happenings, what's ahead, and then we'll close with some discussion and some high-level questions for you to, to ponder.
You have to ride your bike.
We're handing out a couple of exhibits that have been prepared by the consultant that's working for this consortium. One is strip drawings showing One is strip drawings showing thirty percent design of the trail and hole as well as a draft operations, maintenance, and management framework that is really the subject of our discussion tonight. Next slide please. So as an overview, Council Creek Regional Trail is part of a, a much larger project. It is part of the Salmon Berry Trail, which is to a large degree aspirational at this point, but there is a plan and we're completing a, an important link to, to that plan. There'll be, I'm assuming, many, many other phases as, as it starts to, as it starts to develop. So we're gonna focus on one particular segment, next slide please. And that is the, the section between Hillsborough and Forest Grove. So the trail starts at the east, well, let's start it at the west. Forest Grove at Douglas Street where the tracks end and will end at the Trimate Station at Hatfield Station. And will follow the alignment of the existing railroad track. A lot's been happening with the, with the railroad and their formal abandonment of the easement that controlled the, the right of way. It's now reverted back to the Department of Transportation. And there's several steps that need to, to happen in order to acquire its usage from, from ODOT. The next slide is just giving you an idea of that there's an actual budget and there's actually a lot of money behind this project. And it also demonstrates that there is still yet funding gap that needs to be closed. And those, the, the funding gap that remains is the connections to neighborhoods identified in the plan with amenities associated with, so major intersections and connections to downtown residential neighborhoods. And that is an ongoing process, so where we're at right now, funding wise, is we have adequate funds to construct the trail and a few amenities associated with it, but not the, not the ultimate. The original plan was a, a much broader project, but the Raze Grant that was received of twelve million dollars was a fraction of what was originally asked for, so that's why there's a gap. But this is just to show you that there is a lot of money behind this project and it is moving forward. So as mentioned, Pacific and Western Railroad abandoned the right of way. You probably have noticed that the, the tracks have been pulled up at several crossings, U Street Hawthorne. And we are still working with the railroad to get the, the rest of the tracks pulled up. They have hired a contractor to do the work, but they have a year and a half remaining in the order that was established by ODOT to accomplish that, but they are moving forward. So, right now, we're in the process of a land ownership transfer. And the question has arisen, who is actually gonna own the, the right of way? And that's been kind of like a hot potato pass around because nobody really wanted to, to, to take responsibility. However, Trimate did step up to the plate and said they would own the right of way. And that, I think, is still a, a point of conversation, but the process that is that we have to go through is that ODOT offers the, the land a surplus and somebody or anyone can express interest in acquiring that land and pay for it. And one of the steps is the creation of an appraisal, which they are going through the process of doing it right now and then paying fair market. Additional to that, there's a little surplus piece of land that's not really related to the trail, but that we're interested in acquiring for a future water quality facility that will serve this area and a large section of the downtown area, which is kinda at the end of available space for dealing with water quality. So this would be kind of a regional type facility. And we just got the appraisal this past week, have not had a chance to go through it yet, but we'll be having some conversations with ODOT here shortly. So where the consultant is at with things right now is that they have completed the thirty percent sign. This is just an exhibit showing that they actually did it and the alignment has been finalized. There was quite a bit of discussion about it, you wouldn't think there'd be much when it's straight and but there was a, a lot of consideration given to future transit operations and the like. And then the issue of the two bridges, which really makes the, the cost go up quite a bit, and the reason why it's expensive. Now, those crossings are at Dairy Creek and there's a cattle crossing just to the west of it. That will need to be replaced and those decisions have been made to replace it. One thing that Washington County will have to do in order to comply with our land use code is they will need to make application for a land use approval. It may require a notice to property owners and will be, you know, given consideration depending the process that's decided upon. Washington County has not made that application as of yet, but they've been informed that they'll need to do it. This slide was intended to, just to show you that there is a holistic approach that's being taken with each of the crossings to address safety for both pedestrians as well as bicyclists and motorists that, that use them. And there's a wide variety of options that are being entertained for each of them. This is the, just a fraction of the list and it's not complete and it's still being refined, but each of the intersections are being looked at in great detail to make sure that each is optimally designed for, for safety for all users. This slide shows the timeline and the one that I'd like to draw your attention to is the September thirtieth, twenty twenty four deadline. The Raze Grant, which is federal funds that was applied for was for construction only. And that set a deadline for obligation by Washington County to certify right of way and also complete the design and have the project ready by that September thirtieth. So the, the timeline is very, very short here and a, a lot has to happen between now and then to do, so that's why the summit urgency that, that's starting to focus head up right now on issues of management and governance structure and so we've kinda gone over a lot of what's been done here, but these are some of the tasks that are, that are happening. Most importantly is that, that the federal funds be obligated by September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. That will then give two hour, two years to begin construction and start to spend the, start to spend. And in order to do that, they have to have right of way secured and that we have full use of the, of the premises for constructing the work and that we have completed, a fully completed design in the process. And that's what Washington County is working toward right now. I think Jesse's gonna take it from here.
Excellent. So I had a chance, unfortunately Anne can't be with us tonight, Anne Lane, our Parks and Rec Director is on leave. I did have an opportunity however to meet with Greg and with Anne prior to tonight and come and with Anne compose these slides and, and then questions for discussion and a proposed framework. So the context that we're, that we have here is there are three other parks projects in the Parks Master Plan and the capital program that are being planned and designed for future construction. We heard about these in the earlier work session, Kyle Park, Loop Trail, and the East Side Park. Kyle Park's about six acres, it's part of the Loop Trail, Loop Trail's about fifty percent complete and the East Side Park is that half acre park that was purchased in two or three years ago on Nineteenth Avenue behind Ace Hardware. Each park is currently under contract for public outreach, concept planning, and design, so we are actively in, in the process of, of these particular parks. Next slide please. I do want to make sure we have plenty of time for council to discuss here, so I'll go through this rather quickly. Proposed framework. There's a maintenance, management, and operations framework. Trimate has agreed to own the right of way, they do not however own the right of way as of yet. The current management and maintenance is proposed, it's in that study that, that Derek passed out. The ALTA study right here, it's proposed to be addressed by an IGA between the partner agencies. The IGA would outline the rules and responsibilities of each agency and this serves as the framework to do that. This has yet to be discussed by the Technical Advisory Committee for Council Creek Regional Trail and by the Elected Officials Committee. Those are the two committees that were set up to essentially guide this project. So part of the reason for the work session tonight is to get some feedback from the council to inform Councilor Marshall, who's the liaison to the Elected Officials Committee and also staff who serves on the Technical Advisory Committee. So now is the time to comment on any potential framework. The draft framework principles are as follows. Each entity would essentially maintain the day to day. Okay, so the major maintenance items, those would be done on a trail wide basis by a single entity that essentially each entity would pay into. So if you're gonna repave the whole trail, that would be done by one single coordinating entity. As far as the day to day stuff, the sweeping, the, the, you know, trimming, the, the brush and so forth, that would be done by us. The law enforcement would be done by us for our portion of the trail. And then under this model, when we looked at ALTA's numbers that were in the study and when we considered how much the equipment would cost and what the kind of long, what the capital expense would be from a long term basis, we came up with an annual expense of approximately fifty thousand dollars, that's kind of all in, all done. Forest Grove would maintain approximately one third of the trail. If you look at the tire length of the trail, you'll see in that study that we would maintain approximately a third of it. So with that, Greg and/or I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have, but I think the questions for discussion tonight is who should own the right of way? Right now, it's currently, as Greg mentioned, it's owned by the state, it is being disposed of by the railroad. Trimate has said they do want it. What is the council's priority regarding parks projects? So where does Council Creek Regional Trail kind of fit within the pantheon of all of these other projects that we have going on? And then who should manage the Council Creek Regional Trail and how? Right now, it's being proposed to be managed by each individual entity for their respective section, governed by an intergovernmental agreement that sets essentially maintenance standards with one of those entities doing the, what I would characterize as the major maintenance. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and, and search questions.
Okay, questions, comments? Council Rippey, Council President Rippey, sorry.
Thank you. So the, the fifty thousand dollar a month cost, when is that estimated to begin? Because based upon the timeline, it looks like it's not even gonna be open till twenty twenty nine, so.
That's, that's using today's dollars on an hourly basis, based on how many hours would be the trail and that would be when it would open, Council, Council President.
It wouldn't be into the budget necessarily until twenty twenty nine.
Correct, yeah, until that, that's an actual day to day maintenance number and a long term maintenance number, assuming that the trail is constructed and we are actively maintaining it.
And, and then, and then the other question I have is regard to the other three parks. So we're in the process of developing plans for those and even if we had the plans complete, we don't have necessarily sufficient funds to make them happen. We would be looking for federal funding to help do that. So I guess what I'm sort of asking here is, is it possible then to sort of articulate what kind of a timeline would be on these? Because some of these might, the way I'm thinking about it, some of these Kyle, the Loop, and the East Side Park may be able to get completed prior to the twenty twenty nine budget hitting us with regard to the Council Creek, so. I don't know if, if that because we might not get anywhere on the Kyle project if we don't get the federal funding. You see what I'm saying?
I do, yeah. Some of these, some of these park projects are contingent upon potential grant funding, some are eligible for SDC funding. We haven't necessarily synced out these projects and vis a vis the Council Creek Regional Trail, we can certainly do that. I think it would be safe to say that emphasis is being put on all three of these from a design and concept and then when we get to the construction part, that's when we would be proposing some type of construction budget or capital improvement program to the council. It could be a mix of grants, system development charges, it depends on if they're eligible and what they're eligible for. But, but you're correct, we haven't necessarily synced all of these out specifically.
And the last question I have really has to do with the consequences of the, of a decision we may make up here on council. I think one of the options is we could not do anything and not go forward with this, or we have to obligate ourselves. So it's either an either or, as far as I'm concerned, we either choose not to move forward with this, or we choose to obligate the fifty thousand dollars a year. If we choose not to go forward with it, then what does that have to do with regard to the rest of the whole project? Does everybody else drop out as well or, or what? So that's a, it's kind of a rhetorical question to develop the discussion, because I see it as a fairly simple, we either do it or we don't.
The biggest concern is we're, we're sitting here doing a fee and rate structure for, trying to figure out the fees for per wreck because there's not the money there. Yet we're gonna throw another thing at to take care of and have to spend more of the city for them. We already don't even have the staff right now to take care of this. We're adding more.
Counsel, are you going?
First of all, good evening, gentlemen, and thanks for joining us tonight. So I guess that I'm kind of in a quandary here about ownership. Trimate wants to have ownership and Washington County, is that my understanding?
Trimate would be the actual owner of the property and through intergovernmental agreement, we would probably structure something about the constructed works and I think that's the model that Washington County has suggested and I think that's kind of warming up to even though they have but some sort of IGA structure, agreement to manage the, the, the day to day as well as the, the long term with Trimate being
My second question then, on the three parks, I guess that I really kind of have to have more information to be able to prioritize them. First of all, as Tim mentioned about the financing, if we don't know what financing is available and it's going to be put towards each of these projects, I don't know how I can make a reasonable decision on which one should have a how I can make a reasonable decision on which one should have a priority because I'm going to prioritize by who has the money to move forward on the projects, uh, rather than just kind of wishful thinking that we'll get the money. Is there some way that, uh, staff can lay that out a little bit better so that I can see what funds we currently have, what funds we might be able to draw from for each of the projects?
If I may, Mayor.
That's to you, Jesse.
Yeah, I, I think the question was intended to.
He's going.
Yeah. I think the question was intended to be a little bit of a broader question. In other words, um, in, in terms of whether it's, whether it's really kind of capital or operating, what's the council's priority kind of regarding parks projects? So, and, and I think what we mean by that is there's both the capital component to construct it, but then there's the long-term maintenance required associated with it. Currently there's, there's $28 million, I think is what the number was that Greg had to construct Council Creek Trail. Not sure exactly how far down the road that gets that particular project, but the city has pledged through a resolution to contribute 600,000 as a match to their federal grant for that, for the construction of that project. I think the real question we're trying to ask is the long-term maintenance requirement of that project in today's dollars is going to be around $50,000 a year. Knowing these other projects are coming on, what's kind of the long-term priority from just in terms of maintaining these, these particular projects, whether it's East Side, whether it's, uh, the Kyle, whether it's Loop, Loop Trail, or whether it's Council Creek? Um, and, and that's, that's, you know, we can, we can try and gain additional maintenance monies as we continue to progress throughout this, but this is kind of where we're at right now, if that makes sense. Um, so we are trying to make some assumptions, Counsel Ewing, but I think we're just really trying to kind of get a feel of where this just fits in the pantheon of these projects that we have going on. Greg, or did you want to add to that? I think that's just kind of a general sense of what we're trying to get.
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. I mean, this is a project, you know, when you look at the other three parks related projects, they're, they're in design stage right now. Uh, and so they're still don't have budgets established. They don't have, uh, like really any funding behind them other than developing some high level plans or what they might look like. And those are, uh, those are considered by federal agencies. You know, once you have a master plan, uh, that you've been through public process and adopted, then you're, you're at the table for, for funding. But right now it's just, uh, kind of too early in the game. Council Creek Regional Trail is already actually through that process. Uh, we have a master plan. We have, uh, 20 plus million dollars of funding in the bank ready to go. So this, this project is much further along in evolution than, uh,
So I'm kind of, are you done, Counsel Ewing? I'm sorry.
Well, I would just throw this out. If we have dollars already allocated and in the bucket for Council Creek, I think that that would take a priority. I would also like to see a priority taken for the park where there are no parks over on the other side of town, uh, because there is a desert of parks there. So that's just kind of my thinking. We got the dollars, let's kind of partner and move forward with the Council Creek. And then I would like to see development of the park where there are no parks for our community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ewing. I, I'm going to be honest, I'm pretty confused with questions one and three. I feel like I'm a Debbie Downer, but I mean, I've been saying I want the state parks to manage this trail for a while and I keep getting told no. So like, I don't know why I'm getting asked this question when.
Well, I think what we were, so right now Trimet has indicated an interest. If there was another entity that the council did have in mind, that either at the elected official or at the technical committee, you would like us to ask these questions, we certainly can. I think, um, uh, currently Banks for Nonya is, um, managed by State Parks.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, I don't know if there's a proposed managing entity for Salmonberry. Um, but, uh, these are, I think that's why, that was the intent of the question was it's kind of twofold. Is there, is there another agency that we should be looking at or is there a comfort level with Trimet? Trimet has expressed interest because, uh, they want to have it for potentially a future corridor for, for transit. Um, I, I, uh, that, that's what their mission is, um, is, is to do that, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I would say in terms of me, I don't know another agency who wants to own the right of ways other than Trimet, but in terms of management, I think it's very important that there's one agency or entity that manages the whole trail. I think that it is literally doomed for failure. You, if you, I mean, I've, I've never seen a system where you say like, oh, here's this one big event space, but we're going to divide up who's in charge at this spot. I think that's going to create a headache for everyone. I think it needs to be this group's like main cause is to figure out one entity that can manage the whole trail. Um, and then in regards to question two, what is the council's priority regarding our current parks project? I would agree with Counsel Ewing that I think the East Side Park for me is like, if I was going to do that little prioritizing exercise we just did, East Side Park is number one all day long because there's a goal, we have goals that we've already had in, like, you know, that people can walk to a green space, to a park, and you can't on the east side of Forest Grove. I know I work there, you, you literally can't. So to me, that, those are my two, I know it's not much help, but one entity needs to manage the trail and East Side Park's my priority. Counsel Rippey, Council President Rippey.
I, I think, uh, I, I agree from the, from the beginning, we have looked at a, a, an entity that would own and maintain the whole thing. And I don't know if either the tactical committee or the steering committee has asked the Oregon State Parks Department whether or not they would be willing to take that on. But until we have a definitive, they, they refuse to do that. Uh, again, I, I'm, I'm not sure that the model will stand up to long-term. I think, I think we can get it across the finish line, but in terms of long-term, uh, maintenance, I, I don't see how that's going to happen because there's going to be issues with regard to levies every five years for both Cornelius and Forest Grove. I don't know how Hillsborough is going to deal with it, but. And so I, I have been a longtime proponent of the, the transit aspect of this. So if I had to, if the Oregon State Parks doesn't want to do it, I, I suppose I would actually be all right with Trimet owning it so that, uh, there's future hope because we're going to continue to grow. We only have one bus line. So that corridor can then be used because TV Highway is already at max capacity and there is no other line. So that, that would preserve future planning in, in, along that corridor. So, um, I, I am concerned with what Counselor Marshall mentioned. You know, I don't know how much additional maintenance East Side Park, Kyle Park and Loop Trail are going to add, but part of me says we are going forward with obligating our staff to do things where we don't have the resources to do that. So that doesn't make the past the common sense from my perspective. You don't, you, 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 uh, operate according to your budget and it sounds to me like we're going beyond our budget.
So there is going to be a part in all of the, all three of those projects that we mentioned, there will be a part when the conversation is what is the maintenance component prior to the construction part of it? A lot of the maintenance depends on the design of the park. And so typically you'll get a concept design or some maybe a 10% design, and then you can begin to def- define what that maintenance component is. We're just not that far in the process of any of those projects to be able to have that conversation with the council or with the budget committee yet. But Count, Council President Rippey, please be assured we are, that maintenance component is in mind throughout that design process as well. And if you look at Stites, for example, that was one of the driving factors in the design of that particular park. And in addition to some other objectives was that question of what is the maintenance going to be? What is the maintenance going to be? So we will have that conversation, we're just not quite there yet for those projects.
The only other comment I'd like to make is, and, and I'm not going to, is that, uh, and my discussions with other elected officials in other entities, the concept here is almost as if they want the, their portion of the trail to be maintained by neighborhood groups. And so that even scares me even more. Uh, because then you're not going to have any standards, uh, of what that's going to look like. You have no timelines on and on. So I think that I would like to see this, the groups wrestle with this ownership maintenance as an entity, one single entity rather than splitting it out. That would be my direction to Counsel Marshall.
Counsel Ewing.
Well, I have to agree with both, uh, Melinda and Tim in this. I am not a proponent for, uh, entities, scattered entities maintaining, uh, that property. I just don't see it as happening. We see what community groups do with, uh, our roadways. It just is not to me a logical step. I agree that we need to have one entity that is going to be responsible for maintaining it, going to be responsible for making sure that we're in compliance. I agree that Trimet is good about wanting to explore other transportation, but I really do, can we possibly do, or is there an idea to do and establish an entity that would be the over, um, overseer of this project that is composed of, you know, electants or, and community members, but somebody who is independent from, um, government, I guess, that will be maintaining that project as a whole. I just have real fears in not having those things defined and really locked down. So I too, uh, Michael would like to voice that we need to have a single entity. Thank you.
Do you guys have enough from us? Mike, you're good? Okay, cool. You guys are good? Okay, great, thanks. I'm adjourning this work session. We will reconvene in seven minutes. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council on February 26th at 7:04 PM. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Counsel President Rippey?
Here.
Counselor Gusterson?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Ewing?
Okay, I'm here.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Here.
And Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tuolatin Kalapuas who call themselves the At Pilati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay. Public, uh, we are moving on to item B, public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of counselors present, present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. No one is signed up, um, in the lobby for public comment? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to give public comment? Seeing none, and there are no attendees on Zoom, seeing none. So we will move on to item C, the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Counselors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. Counselor Gusterson?
Um, two things I'd like, um, I, I'm assuming on number four, it's the license application for Waltz Brewing instead of Waltz Cruing, so there's just a typo. But I would like to remove number five from the agenda because I have a, um, perceived bias.
Okay. So we're going to remove item five. What's the wish of the remaining four consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item number five.
Second, Counsel Ewing.
It was moved by Counsel President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Marshall to approve consent agenda items one through four. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, consent agenda items one through four is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Okay, so item five, uh, you want to discuss that?
I have a, um, perceived bias, so I'll be abstaining.
Yeah, I wanted to bring it up too, because I would like to, I would like that we, there's five grant applications and we also are amending that program. So I would like to move these to the next meeting, um, and have these, uh, applications go through the amended program. Any discussion or you can't because you're right?
Can't, can I? Yeah, thank you.
I don't have any problem with moving it, um, to the next agenda, especially if we're going to make modifications.
Yeah, consensus? Okay, I see consensus on the dais to do that.
So then I think we need a motion to move item C5 to the agenda for the next regular council meeting in March.
That'd be March 18th.
Okay. Are you moving that?
I made the, I said I moved.
Okay. So it was moved by Counsel Rippey to move it to the next meeting?
Second.
And seconded by Counsel Martinez? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Okay, that is approved with a six to zero vote. Okay, item D, additions and deletions. Mr. City Manager?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Uh, D2, any additions or deletions from the council?
No.
Seeing none, we are.
I just want to call something out. Um, I want to clarify, number five, are we holding that for the next meeting to discuss? Or were you asking that we redo the process? Because if we're going to redo the process, I would like to add something to this agenda.
What was the motion?
The motion was to move the item so that that item could be reconsidered under the, under the new resolution that we're doing later on today. So tonight, and tonight we're, we're doing a resolution that updates that process so that item number, uh, D5 then, or C5 was to be considered under the new, uh, criteria.
Even though everybody has already applied for it?
Yes.
So we'll be pushing it back out to everybody to reapply for all of those.
I don't know, we'll just, we can, we'll discuss that when we get to.
That's why I wanted to bring it up today.
Well, there's a, there's, what we're saying, I think, is that item F4?
It's process, right?
Right. Item F4 is modifying the tourism event sponsorship program by amending exhibit one of resolution number 2023 dash 52. So we can discuss.
At that time? Okay.
Yeah.
That works.
I, I think, but.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Counsel, Counsel President Rippey?
Well, I think she makes a point here, and that is the, the applications were submitted under a certain level, certain set of criteria, and we're amending that criteria that we should at least ask them to resubmit. It may be the very same form.
Right.
But I think they need to be asked to resubmit.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. So let's move on to item E, presentations. And the first presentation we have, oh, just a reminder, the council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. So number, our first presenter is about supportive housing. It's a supportive housing service update from the supportive housing director, Ms. Jess Larson. Oh.
Actually, I think it's going to be, uh, me, Jesse Adams and Mike.
and my colleague Monica Avila doing the presentations to them, Jess, and we're here on Zoom, thinking behind you.
Sorry, I don't have your names on my agenda that said Jess, so I apologize.
That happens a lot because I am Jessie and she is Jess, and so that's a common occurrence. But my name's Jessie Adams. I'm on the Strategic Projects team in the Homeless Services Division of the county. And Monica, do you want to say?
Yeah, hi, my name is Monica Avila. I'm the Housing Program Supervisor for Washington County and where I can work alongside Jessie.
So we are here today to give you an update on year two of the Supportive Housing Services Program in Washington County. We are about halfway through year three, so you're going to hear a little bit about what we've been up to in year three, and then, you know, we'll come back in year three and give you an update on what happened the rest of the year. But I'm going to share my screen. Let me know if that works for you. We just have a quick presentation and then plenty of time for questions after.
We can see it, Jessie.
Perfect. All right, so I'm going to start with this story about Russell. Russell was living outside for a very long time, and this story illustrates the changes that our county has gone through in the two and a half years since the SHS measure passed. Russell had been living outside for a long time, and before the SHS measure passed in this county, we had about $5 million in homelessness response resources. And so there wasn't a lot of hope, honestly. If you lived outside, there was not a lot of options for you to get inside. There were lots of dedicated outreach workers then, but there was not a lot of resources to access shelter or long-term housing. There were zero shelter beds for adult individuals in Washington County prior to the SHS measure passing. So it took a lot to convince Russell that there was actually hope at the end of this road this time, that it mattered to do the assessments, it mattered to engage with outreach workers and enter shelter, that there was an option for long-term housing at the end of all of this. So right now, Russell is at the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter because he noticed that a lot of his friends were working with outreach workers, and people had been outside for a long time, were getting housing vouchers and being able to move into their own place. So he gained hope and trust with his outreach workers. He's now in at the Bridge Shelter and is working with one of the housing navigators and case managers to find long-term housing. He's accessed an ARLA voucher and is looking for a safe place for him, and he feels safe inside for the first time in eight years. So it's a pretty incredible change in our system. So we have some number highlights here to just really show how big our system has gotten in the past three years. As I mentioned, we started, you know, five years ago, or three years ago, with $5 million, and now we're in a place where we placed 1,385 previously homeless individuals. We prevented over 1,000 evictions, which means we're stemming the inflow of people entering into homelessness, and we added 220 shelter beds, doubling our capacity to more than 400 shelter beds currently open. And that is year-round, which was not happening prior to SHS either. There's also a link here in this presentation to read our full annual report online where there are lots of more numbers and information to be found. So here is more specific outcomes. So these graphs show the growth in our housing case management system, our rapid rehousing program, and our eviction prevention programs. So the blue is the goal that we set, or sorry, the light color is the goal that we set, the darker color is the number we actually achieved. So if you notice, in both our housing case management system and our eviction prevention, we far exceeded our goals. In rapid rehousing, we didn't quite, but what we're really learning as we roll out these programs is that we're building infrastructure. So in our housing case management system in year one, we didn't quite meet our goal as we were building that capacity to deliver these services. And then year two, we exceeded it, and we expect to see the same thing happen in our rapid rehousing program since that launched this year. We didn't quite meet our goal in year two, but we fully expect to in year three. And then here are some more graphs and numbers that show our entire system of care. So we're, as mentioned, building, yes, shelter capacity and ARLA vouchers and all of that, and we have to put a whole system in place to make sure that people can access that continuum of services. So we work with the case managers and outreach workers to build that trust, as I mentioned with Russell, and hopefully get them inside to one of our now over 400 shelter beds so they can stay safe and warm, while they work with those housing navigators and housing liaisons and case managers to end up in permanent housing. As always, permanent housing is the goal. And if you see, our entire system now has a housing capacity of working with over 2,500 households. So this next slide focuses specifically on our shelter program outcomes. So we have scaled up to over 400 beds or rooms, and we're really looking on building, again, an entire system that meets the needs of each community and individuals. We're building different types of shelter geographically distributed throughout the county. So the types that came online this year, Family Promise of Walton Valley purchased a Tiger Hotel to serve 70 households. They did that with a blending of SHS funds and project turnkey funds. We also have been opening pod villages throughout the county, so we have 90 total beds online right now. One pod village in Cornelius, one in Hillsborough, and one that just opened in Aloha. And we were able to use the governor's executive order funding to carry our winter-only shelters through year-round operations. And the Beaverton Shelter, the permanent shelter, began construction in November and is slated to open later in 2024. This next slide focuses on permanent supportive housing. So again, as I mentioned, the goal is always permanent supportive housing. Increasing shelter capacity is crucial to make sure that people stay safe and healthy, but we also, of course, want people to get into permanent homes. This year, we were able to bring 84 units online, and that includes Hartwood Common, which is the first Hartwood Commons, which is the first full PSH building in Washington County. It's located in Aloha. There's 54 studio units with full services onsite. There's case management, behavioral health, support, and resident services that are there to support the high acuity needs of those residents. And there are more planned to come online this year. We are planning to have 500 of our total 1,665 units will be permanent supportive housing units. And this next slide, I'm going to hand over to Monica.
Thank you, Jessie. And so this slide is really going to talk about the ways that we have approached to align systems. We work with landlords closely in the private market. We work with them, partner with them, to connect them to case managers, to the housing authority. We work to do landlord recruitment, and we've done outreach. We have a risk mitigation program that landlords can access to prevent evictions or recoup monies after someone has moved out and if there was damage to the unit. By being able to partner and create those relationships with landlords, we have landlords that reach out and give us a list of units that are available, and we can pass those on to the case managers, which then connect the participants that they're working with to these landlords. So we've had great success with that. We continuously get blocks of 20, 30 units that are available, and landlords are willing to work with us, have this be a resource for the case managers, and also they will reduce their screening criteria to help the participants lease up. We've also done regional coordination, so worked with the Beaverton, City Beaverton, to do, have a liaison position with them embedded in the city and to also integrate ourselves and to be able to work better with the cities. We have medical case conferencing with Health Sher, Kaiser, Providence, and Care Oregon. We're working to leverage the Medicaid funding to be able to tap into that resource for participants, also expand the services for them as well. Also adding liaisons to the health and correction systems that also helps provide those additional supports to those in either exiting some type of health or correctional system. So currently, we have done a lot of investments in equity with the community. We work with the providers to have a more diverse staff. 50% of the staff have lived experience. We have surveys and do studies, and the average wages are livable wages for the case managers. And we have expanded our culturally-specific services to Virginia Garcia, NARA, Greater Good Northwest. Currently, we have seven culturally-specific organizations that we work with across our network and always looking to expand that to make sure that we're meeting the community's needs. We do know that we need to do a little more work around the Asian population to reach that population a little bit more. And so we are working on that, partnering, doing lots of outreach to make sure that we are able to incorporate a diverse and, you know, culturally-specific services to our network as well. Thank you. So right now, we are currently on track to meet our goals, for our equity goals, especially with reaching the Latin community. Our next steps are really to go deeper into a culturally-specific cohort, equity training for our workforce, analyze and address barriers for Asian-American families. Those are our priorities for year three, which we are currently in and working on. And so we do see the results from our partners, the feedback that we get from the partners, and we really work towards guiding and being able to meet our needs, especially with the culturally-specific communities that we work with.
I'm going to jump back in for slide nine here. So slide nine is just a quick snapshot of how we are spending the SHS dollars. And you can see where we were in fiscal year '21, '22 compared to where we are now. It's a huge influx of resources into our community, and that's been a big lift for both the SHS team at the county, but also our community-based organizations that we are contracting with. We've been investing quite a bit and asking them to build programming from the ground up to deal with this huge influx of housing vouchers and shelters and programming that's come into our community. So last year, in '22, '23, we expanded 98% of our budget and then continued to work this year on spending even more of the money because we do have some carryover funding. I think you probably have seen some of the reports about the collections and taxes being higher than expected, which is a really good opportunity for us to make some big one-time capital investments. So you can see that bucket on here for capacity building and things like that, where we're able to do one-time investments in building access centers and shelters and really building a strong foundation so that this programming can last far into the future. And then you can see that our biggest buckets of investment are either the long-term rent assistance and short-term housing assistance, again, with housing being the end goal. And you can see our strong investment in that work. And then I just want to point out really quickly to the Regional Investment Fund. That's that small bucket at the top, but a really crucial part of what we do. A portion of the SHS dollars is used in coordination with Metro and Clackamas and Multnomah County to make sure that we are truly addressing this regional crisis in a regional way and that it makes sense, the way the programs are run from county to county, that people can get services in all of the counties and that we're building, again, a true homelessness response system in the metro region as intended. And I'm going to pass it back to Monica.
All right, so as Jessie mentioned earlier, we are in year two of our rapid rehousing program, entering year three for our enhanced rapid rehousing program. And so with that, during year three, we're really working on expanding, evaluating, and monitoring, so really building a better system to be more efficient, have more alignment across the programs so that way things aren't totally different for participants and for providers as well. They're still able to receive the same type of service and access what they need, but not in a way that is so complicated and vastly different that nobody knows what's going on. We're continuing improving and really building up all of our other programs and regionalizing a lot of the work that we do, really, really very focused on evaluating, monitoring, system efficiencies, alignment, also looking at the Medicaid waiver and how that can be incorporated into the housing programs so that way there are more options and more ways to be able to assist the participants that we are working with. So this one is a story, is Danica's story, and really like why we do what we do. So Danica started as a case manager in Tacoma, Washington, and right now she is a Resident Services Coordinator at Hartwood Commons, which is our PSH site. And she brings a lot of resources, energy to the community, and really works on building those relationships with the participants, building the trust, bringing in different types of resources, like free haircuts, lending library, community dinners, and really working in making Hartwood Commons feel like a community, having people's needs met. Yeah, as you can imagine, in a big community, everybody has very different needs, and so it's really her taking that, her drive for this work, and really being able to see how she's able to build people's trust with people and how they're able to trust her. And, you know, at first, although participants may come in and may be really wary about trusting or entering this big system, she really makes that effort to make it feel like home and not make it feel like it's a big burden to come and have so many people and case managers involved in your daily life, but really to build a relationship, to make it more like a resource, like there is a resource for the participants to help them be successful and to help them achieve whatever goals they have. So she's very passionate about it, and, you know, one of the things that she really brings to the table is just that care and that, you know, thoughtfulness of how she engages with people and really wanting the whole property and site to be a success and to be able to build, really building those relationships with the participants so that way they can be successful, even if success, you know, can be different things for many people. But she really puts that effort into just building a community at Hartwood Commons.
And that's our presentation for you today. But we are, of course, happy to take questions, and if we don't have the answers, we are happy to go to gather information and send it to you later.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the presentation.
I was just going to say, I'm going to stop sharing really quick so I can see, but I'm happy to go back to the slide if you'd like me to.
Thanks for the presentation. I have a quick question. On slide 11, when you went over your financial overview, you don't have to share again. I'm just wondering, can you give us a specific example of something purchased? Like you have the Regional Investment Fund. It's to, you know, to encourage collaboration between the different counties. Would I, but like, give me an example of what's being funded with that fund? Like, what are you using that?
Yeah, sure. So Monica spoke briefly about the Risk Mitigation Fund, and that is a contract that all three counties negotiated together with about to do one of the landlord incentives. So that's essentially kind of like extra insurance. If people are renting to somebody who maybe has a risky background, it is extra money that can go towards repairs or damage, like from a flood or a fire, on top of their insurance or to maybe make up a difference if it's not quite something that you would like to, you know, make an insurance claim for, can adjust to fit that kind of middle ground. And then also, last year was the first year we did a regionalized point-in-time count. And so we all coordinated our approaches, questions, services to make sure that we can get a true number of unsheltered and sheltered homelessness in the region for the first time. We did that all together. So investments like that.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Ewing?
Good evening, Jess and Monica. It's nice to see you guys. Two years, some knockum-sockum work you guys have done. I just want to let you know that having been involved for quite some time. So my question. let you know that having been involved for quite some time. So my question is this. I really would like you guys to emphasize more on your presentations about that landlord partnership that you have, because that has really expanded this past year from what it had been, particularly with litigation and extra funds. I think that's a really key part of the presentation, because initially landlords were really more reluctant. But you've really created that program. And I think by your statistics show how much that partnership has really helped. So I think when you're out, you might hit that just a bit more. Are you guys still experiencing low barriers or roadblocks that we as community leaders can address or help you with?
Monica, do you want to jump in and talk about the landlord at all really quick? You have, Monica is our landlord liaison, so she can emphasize some of that awesome work for you. So I'm glad she was here to hear you say that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, they're really the main kind of barriers that we see when, when it comes to landlords is primarily like the screening criteria. I have been pretty lucky that the landlords that, you know, may, may seem like they are kind of a barrier. I just kind of take the time to explain the program to them. So I think a lot of just repetition of, you know, what was this type of the rent assistance program is, it's not vastly different from anything that they've worked with before. And so really, I think, you know, as, as the community, I always tell everybody, one person ruins it for everybody, right? So a lot of the times, all that is repeated are the bad stories. And so I like to also highlight and focus on the good stories, like the, the good things that happen. And even, I think that's been really what has been, what has really helped the landlord program be successful is to just have that education and that point in contact for landlords. And, you know, for them to be able to know that, yeah, I'm gonna, if I have a question, I know who I'm going to reach out to and I will get a response. It's not just going to be floating around somewhere. And so I think, you know, as, as a community, I think that is one of the the positive things that we can all do is really just repeat the good stories that we hear, the success stories that we hear. Because a lot of the times, the bad ones are the ones that get repeated, but the good, there is way more good than bad. So, you know, really just the, the education and consistent repetition of, you know, it's not, it's not a horrible program, just because someone is receiving some type of rent assistance does not make them a bad person. You know, everybody's, everybody has challenges. And of course, once someone leases up and enters into a new unit, you know, if challenges do arise, that's why we're, you know, really lucky to have the case managers that are able to help in and provide that additional support that sometimes, you know, other, others don't receive.
So Monica, could you let us know, are you working with landlords in the Forest Grove area? Have you guys not expanded? Or is there resistance in moving and providing more of those opportunities here in Forest Grove?
Yeah, no, we've definitely, I've definitely had a few landlords from Forest Grove reach out and say like, hey, I heard about this thing. And you know, I just connect with them and they're able to send me their, their listings and I put them on the internal website for the case managers. So yeah, I think if any of you ever talk to any landlords, then you know, you can definitely pass along my, my information for the landlord liaison and I can, you know, do the outreach from there. Because a lot of the times that, that is also where it comes from, is I just meet people out in the community and we're talking about landlords and my work and what I do. And so they'll say, oh, well, I know so and so, and I don't think they're connected. Let me connect you to them. And so that's kind of where that, that, you know, starts. So, yeah, I would say if anybody, if anybody talks to a landlord and they say, hey, we're interested in this, I'm more than happy to take the time to speak with them and talk to them about the program and just explain what we do and how it works.
I have one last question. So we talk a lot about the solution being permanent housing. What is being put into place to build and to extend affordable housing units? Jess, can you hit that one for me?
I can a little bit. There's something that might be coming out later this year that will address some of those questions, but I can't say too much about it now. So there's a little teaser out there for that. But we do have funding that specifically goes to support, that does create the permanent supportive housing units. And we make sure to put other things in those contracts that support building operations, resident services, and the case management, yes. But really, we do put some of that building operation money in there too. We know that these programs can be expensive to operate. And over the past five years in particular, projects have gotten more and more expensive. Construction has raised up quite a bit. And so some of these affordable housing developments are running into a little bit of an issue here as they're nearing the end of that construction period and going into lease-up, they're hitting some real expenses with electrical delays and things like that. So we are able to put some additional money into building operations to support that way. And then we are looking for, you know, continuing to do projects like Hartwood Commons and really leveraging metro dollars and state dollars and pulling all of those projects together. We have some land banked in Forest Grove on Elm Street that we are looking at. You know, an affordable housing project over there too. So we're always continuing to make sure that pipeline keeps going and grading funding together as effectively as possible to make sure we maximize what we have.
Thank you both.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Seeing none. Thank you very much, ladies. Thanks for coming in and sharing the data and informing us. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you so much for your time and support.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to move on to item E2, which is Washington County Sheriff's Office Jail staffing. And coming up to the hot seat is Sheriff Massey. And I'm sorry, I cannot remember your name. David Marzilli. Thank you. Bless you. I'm gonna make him get closer to the mic. Right. Cause you're the boss.
Thank you so much for having us. We are here to talk about the Washington County Jail and the significant staffing working criteria that we, these staffing prices that we're going through, so we can make sure that everyone has a bit of a sense for and what we hope to be able to incorporate. I will do my best to be free. I'm not known. So we're just going to run briefly through how we got here. Talk a little bit about how we permit our effective strength for staffing assignments, things like that. And then the high-risk adult in custody population that we're not working with, that also contributed to our current measures. Some of the services that we do provide, services that are mandated by the state, and then services that we do above and beyond the bare minimum, to make sure that we are providing the best care, safety and security for the adults that are in our and then we'll just briefly touch on sort of the decisions we've made, what our plan is for recovery and some of the recommendations. All right, how did we get here? Well, much of this started with COVID. One of the greatest, greatest impacts to our staff was COVID. So after, what was it, about a year, year and a half, when much of the community was able to, and the workers were able to go back, not wearing masks. The Washington County Jail, considered a congregant facility, they, our staff and adult in custody, that remained masked 24/7 for over it just led to a the rest of the world felt like they were starting to move on. Our staff really never got that our recruitment budget was cut. And so we left it up to what we could do with law to start recruiting, but in a different way. And what we saw was law enforcement so where, when I started, there were, you know, 200 applicants, three positions. We had three applicants for 50. And so getting people, they weren't, as they were doing this work, and then we were not reaching the broader audience. And we had at the time, 37 deputy vacancies. 39 deputy vacancies. This is simply in the jail. For some context, sheriff's offices, full had 97 vacancies, certified, parole jail and non-housing. But 39 total. And then our adult we have, this is no surprise to anyone here, a significant increase in addiction and mental health disorders. Part of that is brought on through drug use. It's led to more, this population is much more difficult for our staff to manage, which also contributes to people getting out of this work. The adult in custody, we are serving so much more labor, so many services, and is also more dangerous. All right. We are budgeted for a 40 jail deputy. We'll, we'll take the numbers here. We know that we have 39 now instead of 7 when there was just a week ago. 37 vacancies that leaves us with 130 filled positions. 21 of those folks are in court security and non-housing roles. So we have time to investigate this, who does do on transport, additional free focus management, the very latest we have, make sure that our adult cities are not staying out with predatory adult cities, things like that. And we have 10 recruits who were out and to leave, at least just the seven people there's a lot of data on this slide. I know you have the presentation. What I want to draw your attention to, 2,000 we hired 20 now, lost five. Go down to 23, 22, 23. What you'll notice all the way down is that we hire fewer, every week, which shows that decrease in where it is typically fewer applications, those fewer applications, fewer backgrounds, and then our once they receive those conditions, they still and their actually, of those people don't we are down we got to
talk about this a little bit. Over the past three years, here's how to get the perfect storm in the jail of staffing going down, work and we have things in the jail that have so pretty incredible slide that lists most of the duties that have to go in jail on a daily basis. Just because we don't have staff, work really shut down, odd, doesn't mean so this slide kind of shows the hours that track month, when, post, it's shut post. This case, pod, pod 1, 5. That means we have to have a depth inside that pod. Oversight of self attorneys, bed checks. If we don't have staff to work post or pod, we, we'd be locked. What that means is AIC get locked in their rooms and the depth our jails are directed, not designed to run that way, it's not designed to block hours on end, like the room. Area of the pod. And so all that work gets done will cascade down the line. We hit a high in July, 2023, of 330 posts in the jail. And that's when we had to decide to make double overtime, first step, work, you know, bring in parole deputies. Can't everything. They can do a lot of the stuff. Intake area, they cover some and then here, here at the time, this desk closes the end of August. That emptied out, sell that. Hours still third. As you see the numbers on the page, that did minutes, field rate, nine with bright size, amount of cell number of depth one of the other aspects of the jail is the amount of work associated. And so if present this AIC, meaning somebody that's on court yet, who still has those AICs usually are more labor intensive, because they need to meet with their attorneys for court or have court appearances remotely. They usually will take time to get settled into the jail team, my tox check, my health treatment, medically dated, detox protocol, that kind of thing. And so it takes a lot of work. Before COVID, we were about now, where we're at is about 80, 90, 10, 30. Well, numbers first. A lot of that is attributed backlog, work system, fence, turn price, post, can't get people to move system. Takes a lot of work. Increased workload. And use of forces have, well, folks come in with more mental illness. Their population is managed, they're drug addicted. They're dealing with the same COVID restrictions, having to wear masks. They didn't have to wear maybe on the outside. And all that stuff, fine, great, more it's gone down, 2022, but it's kind of starting to trend up as well. Not really sure why that is, other than just kind of the normal flow of it. Really ability. Detox protocol. That's another big thing we have. So AIC comes in and their detox That's another big thing we have. So AIC comes in, and they're detox drugs. They're fragile, they could die without medical intervention. So it has increased work. Serve them, do checks on them, ensure medical. To check and get. Spiked up. Has gone down a little bit, but a lot of that would contribute to a lower bill. Having helped out some of the. Of those folks. They're physical, comfortable, sick, want to get up before. Talk to them. Here are the.
As you look at this work cloud, the big old box are the things that are occurring multiple times a day. So these, these are the things really. So medication. Professional business. When, when, uh, kind of mark really about the workload being more laborious for those. At looking at professional visits, court visits, like that, those are all free sent. And so. You have your heart of rest, social business, reason, force release. Part of our everyday. We have to review if those custody, and we don't have enough beds, we review our custody, do a risk. We have these people who are the lowest risk, either re-. Win another crime or. The over. Way, medical escorts are way up, have a more medical, fragile. Um, classification, critical. Predatory adult. Those. Aerial health issues, and more prone. And then we're required to grant some areas every. Thirty, some cases. So those, those just look at those areas, whole, big, those. So we decreased our booking rate. In an effort to reduce the pressure, we closed two houses. In order to now, to manage the fewer number of beds, had to reduce our booking criteria. So we. People in four thousand five day misdemeanor that are personally. DUI, criminal arrest. Anything that is subject to pre-arrest. Arrest. What it means. That take all them. Over level time, they're really. Livability. That's too hard. Safe, whatever, their day. Now, we, we do have that arresting officer. Yeah. You get someone who's going into a business feeling. We issue them patients to go back to a business and still again. In order to remove them. Of this, all this. Will take those. But we, it's. Them. Faceway. That prohibits them. So. We've already done some of these things. Right? We reduce our AIC capacity to nine. We are also renting beds. You know, and we are. If those. People. Sort of for some. That they have. That was that. We have gone to the board. We created ability to. For a firm, and we have been doing. As of. Eighty-three hundred percent. On just. So that does give me. We have initiated some bonus. It's collateral carrying. So with the retention, sort of a. Ability. That then is. Uh, also providing. For especially marked or dead. Or jail. Through jail. Um, Washington. Yeah. We have forward direct support. Another thing we did, all of our locals didn't. Like, hey, you. Who. But it's not for some character base. Or, you know. Something is, you know, their focus or stuff, but please, you just, you can't be job. City. And. Driving. Like. Like that. Please refer them. You're going. Do the job further. And we could do something more of a direct type. It's a good, it's a good device, a local aid. We could give. Or can we? Gain some of that experience, might be. Later. And they are. Then hundred percent. And then again, like. Double over in the jail, so parole, detective. So that they're.
The big question is, when, when do you start to reopen the jail and increase the book? Um, you know, the, the chart on the bottom kind of shows, we, we do two. See in twenty-twenty, we were, we were. Now we're. Frame. The momentum that got us here has a lot of kinetic energy. It's going to take time to blow that, move. We're getting the efforts that Sheriff talked about, our efforts to slow that energy down and get it. It's gonna. We've never, we've never been in this. Where we've, this, this type of work, this increased workload with this depth. Don't know precisely what it's going to take. So hundred and two to hundred and seven is kind of the line on the stand that we drew to gauge. And we meet with the analyst team weekly. I do talk about where we're at, what's going on. How are we doing, help wise, jail, every single person. I'm counting them. And we're anticipating when they're going to get out of F, where they're going to go, how's that. Feel off great. So. So as we increase our recruitment. Recruitment firms, hard to see those, we can better find two dates and personnel. Right now, the number is about a hundred and two, and reassess opening a pod. Prior to that, we'll look at. We're rolling in some of the books. Increase some of those crimes we're talking about that are of livability crimes. Opportunities to start. Don't want to do, do it too quick, because unlike parole, where if a force probe, a big incident, you need a lot of resources. Get on the radio with mutual aid agreements. Hundred police officers. In the jail, what we have inside the building, by those. And so we don't want to overstretch ourselves, get ourselves safe with our staff. Best test. About a hundred. Pod, and as incremental. More we can second.
No, it's that. What?
Counselor Gusterson.
Um, I have a couple of questions. One, I noticed a big spike in the May-June twenty-twenty-three. Um, did you identify ever why there was such a sharp spike at that time?
Uh, which spike, which, which?
Um, between like, it, it started going up in March twenty-twenty-three, and it spiked around between May and June twenty-twenty-three, and it was a significant spike, and I'm just curious if that was identified.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that. We don't really know why that, that spike occurred. Um, it was also when we started. Tell them reduce pods, but I think drop off is because. Not. Help. So. Going.
Sure. Okay.
It's all huge. Huge problem. Inside. Ability. Cert. Drug. So. Drug dog. That, but. All the drug addiction.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, are you finding that you're not able, that we're not moving forward with pressing charges like we would have before as a result of just not having the staff available in the jails?
We're not, we're not.
Correct. Correct.
No, I think we're still, well. Probably yes. Probably the. Probably a little frustrated that they can't. Just going to citation as much. But we are. Our. In support. We have.
Okay. And then the third thing, I just want to congratulate you on your new appointment. Thank you.
I want to add too that, um. I know that our deputies. Are showing up, they're responding, they're issuing citations. Other parts that causes. What I don't have is how many. Charging is off, just because the workload and also how many of those result in failure here. It, it ends up being a. Charge more about failure here.
Sure.
And other time they do. Take contact. You know, the original charge, free day, cop. Something else.
It's an impossible job during impossible times. I really appreciate everything you guys are doing, and just keep trying to think outside the box. That's all I can say.
Yes, absolutely. We, we. No risk should ever be.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo what Counselor Gusterson said. Um, you know, you know, I'm a teacher. Your husband's a teacher. It's like been crazy times. Uh, post pandemic, but I've seen this presentation or a similar presentation multiple times, and it still shocks me. I think my question is. It sounds with the, the addiction and detox, like that's more of medical concerns. So I'm just wondering, like, within measure one-ten, and then the short session, is there a space for there to be almost like a halfway house to get into jail? Like a, a detox medical facility that kind of alleviates some pressure from? I mean, to me, I'm concerned because you're short-staffed. And what I know as a public service, someone that works in the public, is that if you're not trained, and you have all these expectations, and there's just more and more things you're supposed to do and to fix. Like, that doesn't help with recruitment and retention either, because you just feel like, I can't, like, I am a human being, like, I can't be a doctor. I can't be a counselor. I can't feed you. I can't, you know what I mean? Like, all the things.
I appreciate that. And you're right. In many ways, the way that we've evolved has been amazing, because we are, I think, as a profession, there's so much more professional show up, so much better. Maybe than the whole way back when. However, um, Washington County is going to be the first one with the center of addiction. Right? So those programs and the process with the reform about. Um, they are putting into play. Um, some. Some infrastructure and full funding to build those sports plays so that people can divert appropriately. And some less crowded terminal about. Um, unfortunately. What we're seeing is that so much of the property is as a result of.
Addiction.
That. Situation. Figure out addiction. And maybe the terminal aspect has some motivation to free kids. And having. And we remove them just. Everything still. To. Do that. Jail, right? Jail.
Any other questions? Okay. Ding-dun. Thank you both so much for coming out. It was nice.
If there are other questions any other time, any other day, please don't.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks, Commander. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item E three, which is our charter commission update, and we have our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll, on Zoom.
Hi. Uh, good evening, Council. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Um, so Ashley Driscoll, City Attorney's Office. And I'm here this evening to give you a relatively brief update on our Charter Review Committee and our forthcoming recommendations. So just as a brief background, I'm starting at the end of two, twenty-twenty-two, the city council decided to undergo a process to review your, um, your city's charter, which had not been reviewed since two thousand and nine. So beginning in February twenty-twenty-three, the city council formed the Charter Review Commission and set expectations for that commission, which included the scope of the review of the charter, um, the composition of the committee, um, staffing, and areas of review that the council would, would have liked recommendations on. So that started in February twenty-twenty-three. Um, the council also did an open recruitment for members of the commission. That happened throughout the spring and the summer. Ultimately, the city council appointed eleven individuals to be part of the Charter Review Commission. And those individuals were two from each quadrant of the city, and then three at, at-large members, so a total of eleven. Um, once the committee was formed, we began meeting in August of this last year, so August of twenty-twenty-three. And between August and now, the Charter Review Committee has met a total of twelve times. So the mission of the Charter Review Committee was to take a look at your charter. Again, it hadn't been reviewed in quite some time. So to ensure that that document still met the needs of the community now, and met the needs of the community going. So to ensure that that document, um, still met the needs of the community now and met the needs of the community going into the future. So the committee's task was relatively broad. Um, the, the City Council gave the committee the authority to review the entire charter um, and to make rec, any recommendations or amendments to the charter that they felt would serve the community. The City Council also asked the committee to look at a number of specific areas. And those areas are geographic representation, term limits for the mayor and city councillors, um, the city manager residency requirement and the role of the mayor and the council president. One of the other things that the City Council asked the committee to do was to compare our charter um, to LOCs, the League of Oregon Cities Model Charter. League of Oregon Cities puts out a model charter. It's a great resource for cities and they update it periodically. So to ensure that our updates stay current with the League of Oregon Cities Model Charter and if we are not adopting any of those updates, to have a discussion about, um, why tho, those did not meet the needs of the community. So, you know, from my perspective, the process has gone really well. Again, we've met twelve times. The, um, the mayor appointed the chair, which is Alicia Johnson, and she's been doing a fabulous job and vice chair as Val Valfrey. He's also, um, really done a nice job. The discussions have been, um, robust. Everybody has participated in a really high level, very thoughtful conversations. So my, um, objective here tonight is to update the, update the City Council on where we are in the process and the steps that are still forthcoming before the recommendations will reach you. So at this point in the process, we are done. The committee is done with our initial review and recommendation. So we've started at the beginning of the charter and we've worked our way all the way through and we've developed a set of preliminary recommendations and drafted a preliminary report. One of the things that the City Council asked from this committee is to solicit public input. So that's the stage of the process that we are at. So we are, you know, completed our preliminary review. Um, we are currently, um, circulating our draft amendments to the charter and our draft final report. Next up, the committee is going to engage in a number of listening sessions. We have two scheduled so far. And the point of those sessions is to receive input from the public. So again, you know, we provided every, everything that we've done to date and now we want to hear from the public if these amendments are also meeting their needs. So once we have the listening sessions, the committee will come back together, consider everything that we have heard from members of the public, both in person and in writing, and reconsider our recommendations. There could be, you know, a, you know, somebody makes a very thoughtful comment that makes the committee reconsider an amendment they had previously recommended or vice versa. So we have those, um, those meetings still upcoming. Once we do that, the committee will finalize its recommended amendments and finalize its, um, recommend, I'm sorry, finalize its report to the City Council. The City Council will then schedule a work session where you will review, um, the, the amendments to the charter and also the final report. At that time, the City Council can, you know, decide to take a number of different paths. The City Council can decide to adopt the recommendations, make rec, or make amendments to the recommendations or, you know, reject the recommendations from the committee. The City Council can also engage in additional public process where you hold public hearings and receive additional feedback from the public. At the end of the process, if the City Council decides that amendments should be made to the current city charter, those recommendation for amendments would need to go to voters. So we'd work to, together then to draft either one or a number of ballot measures that will appear, you know, everything goes as planned on the November twenty-twenty-four ballot. And if the voters approve those, those amendments, um, they'll go into effect after that time. So that's where we are in the process. Again, the work has been going on in, at the committee level for, you know, quite a number of months now and we are at the stage where we are starting to engage public input and it made sense to make sure that the City Council was aware that this process was still ongoing and that, um, the committee report will be coming up to you for your consideration at a work session in the future. To briefly touch on, you know, what the committee is recommending at this point, again, these are preliminary recommendations because we have not yet heard from the public. Um, there are a number of amendments that are in the, in the report, but I just want to hit on a couple. Um, first for geog, geographic representation, this is an issue that the committee spent a substantial amount of time on, selected, um, a lot of different resources and reviewed a lot of different data. And at this point, the committee is not recommending that the city move to a ward or district system. Um, likewise, the city, I'm sorry, the committee spent a lot of time on term limits, whether it made sense for the city of Forest Grove to implement term limits for the mayor or any member of the council. After consideration, the city, I'm sorry, the committee is not going to be recommending that the city change its charter to impose any sort of term limits on the mayor or members of the city council. The Charter Review Committee is at this point making some recommendations to the role of the mayor and the council president. Um, the changes that they're recommending for the role of the mayor is that the mayor would go from voting on every matter before the body to only voting in case of a tie. And the driving force behind this is to allow the mayor, whoever's in the mayor position, to focus on some of those other mayoral duties and to be the person on the council whose role it is to be more of a, um, a consensus builder and, um, to focus on, again, those other duties because there are quite, quite a number of additional duties for the mayor. For the council president, um, the council president, the committee is recommending that the council president, even when acting in the role of the mail, mayor retains the right to vote. The reasoning behind that is that, you know, the items that they're considering, the reasons they're considering having the mayor only vote in case of a tie don't seem as applicable to somebody who's only stepping into that role on a, you know, one or two meeting basis and isn't in charge of the full ra, full array of mayoral duties for an extended period of time. The committee is recommending that the council president role, um, rotate at least every two years. I'm sure the council is aware, you vote on your council president each year, but this charter amendment would have uh, the position rotate every two years to make sure that more members of the council have the opportunity to have a leadership position within the council. Um, the committee is also recommending that the city amend its city manager residency requirement. Although having a city manager who resides in the city is important to the Charter Review Commission, one of the things that we've talked about at length is being able to find the right person for that job and to have some flexibility um, regarding hiring that person. So many cities negotiate a residency requirement into a contract with the city manager rather than having it in the charter in order to give you flexibility to be able to find the right person for that role. Um, I think those are the most significant recommendations that the Charter Review Committee is recommending at this point. Um, as I said previously, the point of tonight's presentation is to make sure that the council was aware of this process and aware of where we, where we are at and that it will be coming to you, um, hopefully pretty soon. Um, so I can answer any questions if the council has them.
I have a quick question. Um, with the listening sessions, what's the? How are you gathering the feedback from the listening sessions to report to us? Like, should we, I mean, I'm just going to be really blunt. Should I be going to these listening sessions so I can care for myself? But I, I didn't see in the packet materials any sort of surveys or any sort of, um, you know, feedback. And then I would also just was curious too, like, there's in our livability survey, there was a question about term limits. Was that given to this committee?
So, yes.
Seventy percent of the community. I mean, so I also think like that should be included in, that's community input um, about the charter. So I just want to say like when we come back to our work session or whatever, that I would like to see like accumulative feedback from community that, uh, yeah, and not just from, I mean, I want to see the feedback from the listening sessions, but I also believe that the community has given us feedback about some of these things. So that should be included in the overall report. But yeah, so can you answer that question about the listening sessions?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. I think, um, sort of what we had envisioned is if there are significant updates, um, amendments to the original recommendations, that there would be additional section in the report that summarizes the, um, the feedback that we received from the committee. I'm sorry, from the listening sessions and we add that and make sure that the council is aware of that. If it's important for the council to see all the different pieces of feedback that we have received, we can also make sure that those are in the final packet that comes to the council during our work session.
Thank you. Counselor Rippey and then Counselor Ewing.
Uh, thank you. Do you have any dates and times and locations set for those listening sessions?
Yes, um, Jesse might have to help me out. I believe that the first one is on March thirteenth and that's a Wednesday and it's at six o'clock at the Forest Grove, in the Forest Grove Auditorium. And I believe the follow-up one is the next Wednesday. And I'm just checking that. So the, I believe the follow-up one is the twentieth. There is also a webpage that has started for the Charter Review Committee, so folks, if they are not able to attend those section, those listening sessions can also submit their comments online.
So the only other comment I have is that, uh, in, in whatever, uh, we decide here with regard to the feedback that, that every single member of the council have the e, equal opportunity for the, to hear. And, uh, so either, you know, in, in my opinion, either all of us attend the listening sessions or none of us do. I, I think it's inappropriate for one, one or two people to attend without the rest, they having the same advantage of listening to the discussions or the comments. Thank you.
Well, in response to Counsel, Counsel President Rippey's comments, then we really don't have a choice and we can't even come to a consensus and make that because the very first listening session, four of us are going to be in DC. So the decision's basically been made for us. Right? I mean, that's the way I look at it. Like, we, like physically can't attend. Four of us can't attend. So that means none of us should attend. Right?
I, I think this.
So I'm able to be able to assist here. So first of all, I just want to verify that the listening sessions are March thirteenth and March twentieth. So I did speak correctly there. Um, you know, the listening sessions are typically, or we could easily record the listening sessions and so they can be available to everybody.
Rick, Counsel Ewing.
Um, I do agree that either it's all or none in the listening sessions. Otherwise, there's a presumption uh, being made of those who are not in attendance and those that are. I prefer that all of that information come through, uh, Ashley and through the team that we've put together for the charter so that we all have the same access to our materials and information from those sessions. Um, so on the twentieth, Ashley, that will also be at the auditorium at six PM. Okay. I just wanted to make sure for our public at large that they were able to hear that. So I have a, a query here. Uh, why would we be doing more than one ballot measure? I'm, I'm hearing this and I'm not really comfortable why it's necessary and why we would split up the charter recommendations into different measures. Can you go there for me?
I can give you a really brief overview. So some of it is, um, is a policy decision on the behalf of the city. A lot of cities, you know, will do a full new charter and that will make sense that that is one ballot measure that the voters receive. Um, in other instances, it makes sense to group them by general subject matter. So, you know, changes, it makes sense to cha, to group the changes for the mayoral and council president duties because they are contingent on one another. Um, but there might be other independent choices. Somebody may want to vote on term limits separately than, you know, city manager residency requirement and it may make sense for the city to ask those as separate questions.
Thank you. That provides so much more clarity to me. Um, when I went through the, and first of all, I really commend you, Ashley, commend you and your team. Uh, that was a huge chunk of work. Uh, the recommendations that I have read so, you know, through the packet were well thought out and informed. Um, I just can't thank your group enough for that hard work. Um, one of the things that came up in the last few years, and I don't think we, uh, even kind of got there, but there was a portion that talked about appointments that if, you know, somebody passed away or, you know, how that appointment uh, process would go forward. Um, one of the things I don't think that we addressed was how do you remove an appointee? Not somebody who is elected, but an appointee. Uh, say for instance, uh, the appointee is, uh, I know they have to live in the city, but is there a mechanism by which that we as a council under consensus can remove an appointee?
So, sir, are you talking about a, a, somebody on city council who has been appointed rather than?
Yes.
Okay. So once somebody, somebody has been appointed to a city council position, they are, they become a city councillor. So they would have the same appointment and, they would have the same removal criteria as any other member of the council under your current city charter and under the League of Oregon City Model Charter as well.
So in our charter, Elena, it says if a councillor doesn't show up for a forty-five day period, um, they vacate the position or by recall.
I, I understand that, but I'm talking about conduct issues. Uh, since we, the comments that I got from community members is that they never got an option as to whether or not they want to disappointee or an appointee. I'm not specifying anybody. That they felt that their rights were kind of taken away from them in how they were being represented as well as, uh, when things are done that are not done appropriately. Since we appointed those members, we should have the ability to censor or to remove them from office. That I'm, I'm not saying that's in the charter. I'm saying that this is the comments under that I have gotten in the last few years from community members on our adoption of um, appointees for city council positions. So I'm just questioning is, has there been a discussion? If we're saying that they automatically become a council member, there's very little that can be done to remove a member. Uh, forty-five days, yeah, okay, but I'm talking about personal issues. I'm talking about not following the rules, not following the law, uh, things that can get us as a city in a legal, um, bind.
So I can speak to what the committee has considered to date.
Thank you.
Those are not, you know, specific issues that we consider removing appointees on a different basis than elected members of council. However, one of the things that is in the recommendation is shorter, shortening the appointment term. So currently, if, you know, somebody steps down, if the cit, elected city councillor steps down in the first year of the term, the city council appoints somebody to fill that entire four-year term. So, you know, if somebody steps down the month after they're elected, the appointee serves four years. In the recommendation, um, the committee is recommending shortening that term. So an appointee's term would be no more than two years until the next general election. And if the original city councillor steps down in the first two years of their term, the election would be for fulfilling the next two years of the term. So it's not a full four-year term. It's the remainder of that city councillor's term. So at this point, um, where we are in the process is, you know, finalizing the recommendations from the Charter Review Committee. And then again, it's going to come to the city council and the city council is going to have a variety of options of how you would like to handle those recommendations. And if there are additional amendments that the city council would like to consider, you certainly can do so at that time.
Thank you, Ashley. I appreciate it.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, go ahead, Counsel Valenzuela.
Yes, I just have, uh, to ask questions since I was one of the appointees here and you mentioned something about the law. Elena, um, I don't think you were speaking about me nor Christie because neither one of us has broken the law. Or done anything like that. I feel offended right now, my friend. or done anything like that. I feel offended right now, my friend. I'm sorry I had to express that.
I am so sorry, Mariana. That is not my intent. I'm talking about generality. I'm talking about what was brought to me by community members. Please, I really express my deep sorrow in offending you. I'm just asking legal questions. It is not a personal and certainly in no way did I ever imagine that you had broken the law. It was a general question.
Thank you, Elena.
Okay. Are we good? Okay, thank you, Ashley.
Okay, have a great evening.
Thanks, you too. We're going to move on to Agenda Item F1, which is our public hearing second reading, amending Title III Administration, Chapter 35, City Organizations, Group 5.065 through 35.095 of City Code relating to Historic Landmarks Board and Community Forestry Commission. Oh, there we go again. I will now reopen the public hearing for a second reading of Ordinance Number 2024-03. The city council passed a motion during the February 12th council meeting, continuing the public hearing and advancing Ordinance Number 2024-03 to a second reading. If approved by the city council, the ordinance will amend the Forest Grove City Code to remove bylaw language from the Community Forestry Commission and Historic Landmarks Board sections. Are there any additional comments that staff would like to enter into the record?
There are no additional comments.
None? Okay. Does the council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now call in persons who signed up to comment on the ordinance. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents of this ordinance that would like to testify? Seeing none in person or on Zoom, I will now ask for opponents. Seeing none in person or on Zoom and anyone that has other comments. Still seeing none in person and on Zoom. So the hearing is now closed. Wait, the hearing is now closed. Gavel. I had it backwards. I apologize. Is there a motion from council to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2024-03?
I move that we pass Ordinance Number 2024-03.
Second.
It was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Councilor Gustafson. All those in favor, please, wait, I skipped something. I'm sure I did. Okay, so is there any further discussion from the council on the motion before we proceed with the roll call vote? Any further discussion seeing none? Will the city manager please read it by title only?
Ordinance Number 2024-03, amending Title III Administration, Chapter 35, City Organizations, Section 35065 through Section 35095 of the City Code relating to Historic Landmarks Board and Community Forestry Commission.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Councilor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Councilor Martinez?
Yes.
Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel? Yes. The vote is seven to zero. Ordinance Number 2024-03 is adopted by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you. Next up for item F2 is Resolution Number 2024-04, adopting bylaws for the Forest Grove, the City of Forest Grove Community Forestry Commission and Historic Landmarks Board. Will the staff please present the report?
So this is kind of just the finalization of all the bylaws. We passed the initial ones. And now with the passing of Ordinance 2024-03, we can pass the updated bylaws for CFC and HLB. It's following the same template as the other ones. Yeah.
Great. Any questions from council for staff? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-04?
I move that we accept Resolution Number 2024-04.
Can I get, do you guys, and it's also 2024-05? And Resolution 2024, do I need to have them say all of those? So in the motion, should it be Resolutions 2024-04, 05, and 06? Or are they all included in this resolution number?
This is just for 04. The other resolutions are separate. It's just one script for all the resolutions.
Okay, on my agenda, there's only this one resolution though.
There's the next page.
The next page is 05.
Two different resolutions there.
It's 05 exercising a city authority to exclude and reject public-
Those are just separate ones.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You guys aren't understanding what I'm saying, I don't think.
So Resolution 2024-04 adopts both the CFC and the HLB bylaws. There's not a separate resolution for both bylaws. Yeah, that's what I thought you were, okay. So it covers both.
Thank you. Okay, um, so there's a motion. Was there, was there a motion? I lost.
Yes, there was a motion.
From Councilor Martinez? Who was the second?
Nobody yet.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Marshall. Oh, man. Okay, so is there any further discussion from the council? Okay, city manager, will you please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 2024-04, adapt, adopting bylaws for the City of Forest Grove Community Forestry Commission and the Historic Landmarks Board.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Seeing none, it is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, moving on to item F3. Resolution exercising city authority to exclude and eject public utility from territory annexed into the city. And we have Lightning Power Director Keith Forman coming up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. As noted in your staff report, a couple of months ago, council approved the annexation of about 20 acres at 910 Martin Road. And at this point, PGE is the provider of power to that that area. And now that it is annexed into the city, we do have the right to serve that property. So we worked closely with legal and also collaborated with PGE on this process. And the next step is to, of the process is to approve a resolution that would allow the City of Forest Grove to serve power to this property, not just as part of the city. Mayor, answer any questions or-
Any questions of council? Yes, I mean of staff from council. Geez. Council President Rippey?
Thanks, Keith, for waiting this whole time till you get this. But the question I guess I have is, is this a, is there any capital outlay that's going to be required? Or is this simply a flipping of switch?
Yes, we will need to do a line extension to the single customer that's currently at- We expect, they expect it'll probably be within 100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution Number 2024-05.
I second.
Okay. So the motion from Council President Rippey, seconded by Councilor Martinez, to pass Resolution Number 2024-05. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 2024-05, exercising city authority to exclude and eject public utility from territory annexed into the city.
Okay. Um, can we do this all together or do I need to do a roll call vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, Resolution 2024-05 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Thank you, Keith. The item F4, Resolution Number 2024-06, modifying the tourism event sponsorship program by amending Exhibit 1 of Resolution Number 2023-52. I'm going to turn over to Brian and Miles.
Thanks, Mayor and City Council. So we rolled out the tourism sponsorship program and we've gotten some applications and some questions have arisen. And so we have a couple of guidelines to clarify that we'd like to add. The first one is that we'd only award sponsorship level equal to their published schedule. So if their maximum award that you could buy is $2,000, we'd only award up but off 5,000. You know, an additional 3,000. Sponsorship amount. The second one is if an event lacks a predetermined sponsorship amount, that we would tap the amount at 2,000. And that's to encourage groups to look for other sponsorship opportunities. And then the third is that event organizers must produce marketing materials and include the city in those marketing. So we already have that we be included in the marketing materials, but this just guarantees that they're producing. And those are the chances that we're proposing.
Yeah, I'll go with you first and then I'll follow up. Council President Rippey?
So the question I had, thank you, Miles, again for waiting all this, the whole evening. The question I had is around the second one. We said that or either one, if so, for example, they have a structured sponsorship thing and you go to 2,000 or, and then the next one may be 6,000. But the maximum of our program is 5,000. So would we be doing, do we do a portion of a sponsorship or just stick with the two? We wouldn't go 5,000 in a 6,000 bracket?
I, I would think that we would stick with the 2,000.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, do in, in the current system, is there, do grant requests match fiscal year requests?
So it's not a grant?
Well, not a grant, but well, what is it? Like, what would you call it? Like a sponsorship?
Sponsorship.
Okay, so do sponsorship requests match fiscal year requests? Like, so what I'm saying is if, like, we receive the funding, do they have to use it within that same fiscal year that we offered?
It's currently not set up that way. Part of it is we ask for 90 days in advance of the So a lot of these events are planning before-
Right.
And spending money before the event may be in the-
So
Go ahead.
So to, to her point, though, I think it's, it's important, I'm trying to understand, the TLT monies come in, when, when do they come in? So then, then is that, and if that's not our fiscal year, then the question would be when the TLT monies come in for 12 months after that, is, is the program? Or are we basing this on strictly on our fiscal year program? So I think we need clarification on that.
Right. I agree.
Yeah.
So I think when we went to initially set up the program, which started in November, we characterized it as $40,000 for this fiscal year. And that would be through June 30th of this year. And then there would be another 40,000 that would come online on July 1st for the following fiscal year that would be applied to the events program. Does that answer your question? As far as when the events timeout, it may be a little off sync, but over the course of a year or two, it will get on sync as the money goes out for that particular event.
So I'm not so worried as much as about the money going out as I am the money coming in. So we want to be able to say we have $40,000 because during this fiscal year, because that's what we're getting.
Yes, that was our understanding was that there was $40,000 for this fiscal year. And then there would be another starting July 1st pending approval by the Budget Committee, starting July 1st of, of this year.
And then there is already the requirement of one application per event.
Correct.
Right? So you just have the year of that event when they apply.
Correct.
Right?
Well, that's a good point.
Well, you see what I'm saying? Like if you, like, I've seen some applications and it just says Oktoberfest, for example.
Yeah, so-
So Oktoberfest-
Most of them have a defined date. Some of them have a date range.
Right.
They haven't selected a specific date yet.
You understand what I'm saying? I just want to make sure it's easy for you to track and keep track of like which-
Which fiscal year the money is coming out of.
Right, which, which is coming out of.
Yes.
Councilor Ewing?
Uh, thanks. So my question is, we already have applications in place. Are the applicants aware that we're making these modifications? Are we letting them know because they put out the effort to put in the application in a timely manner? Or are they going to be, obviously, they're not going to be grandfathered into it because we're making changes. But how do we provide equity? I guess that I feel that applications were received, now we're kind of changing the goalpost. So how can we mediate that so that there, the applicants feel that they've been treated equitably?
All right, I don't, you go ahead.
I'm just gonna kind of
Wait, can I, can I get a clarification question? Like, is so you didn't, like, you're not stepping out of this conversation?
Oh, absolutely not. This is an effect, like, money is going to any organization and I have to do it.
The staff feel like that's a fine-
I guess if, to maybe try and address Councilor Ewing's questions, we currently have, is it six applications?
Correct.
Okay, we currently have six applications. I think that the question is, is whether we ask those applicants to reapply under the revised conditions, presuming this resolution passes, or whether you award those under the existing rules, if you will, or existing guidelines. The conversation that was had during the consent agenda, I think pointed toward requiring the applicants to reapply and then score those applications through the new rubric pending what happened with the passage of this resolution. So I think that question was addressed during the consent agenda, but if the council wanted to clarify it, they certainly can during this discussion.
The next question I have, so I can get off the call here. Anyway, the next question I have is, are we doing, are we going to change if an applicant, because most events, most sponsorship tiers, those are yearly events by organizations. Are we going to have a limitation of how many times a particular applicant can apply? Or can they reapply each year for the similar or same event?
So currently, they could apply year after year for the event.
Okay.
Councilor Gustafson?
So I wanted to just, I agree with Councilor Ewing. We've already allowed people to apply. And it was a meeting or two ago that, that there were adjustments wanting to be made by an applicant of another grant. And because of those changes, we said, no, you, you have to reapply. And I feel like this ship has sailed and we're trying to change the rules of the game in the middle of the game. I, I don't think the intent was for this to change today and make everybody reapply. I think the intent was the city staff discovered some changes that needed to be made that they didn't think through and we didn't catch. And that's kind of on the city. So I don't, for my own integrity, I could not feel comfortable with, with being okay with changing the, the rules of the game during the game.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think for my perspective is that this is a new program. And like, when I first write a draft of something, like, you kind of figure out, my concerns right now is that with six applicants, there's only, there's three organizations that have applied. Right? Out of the six.
Correct.
And the, if my math is correct, those applicants are, if they are all approved, that's how much money? 25,000, 30,000? Like, so what is it?
27.5.
27.5. So I'm just, I think my concern is that the idea is to bring people here and, but also to make sure that like nonprofits have the same ability to get it. And it, and I'm going to be like really blunt, like, right now, the city club has the cords and different things we approved last time, then Oktoberfest, Heritage Festival, and tinsels and tidings. Like, that's, I think- tinsels and tidings, like that's, I think 20,000, that's half of the fund. Um, which I think is great because they're great events, but I also am like, what, like do, I just don't want someone to come to me and I'm going to be really honest and say, I don't think it's fair that the city, because I've heard this, that the city club president on council, you guys made this program and the city club got the majority of the money. Like, and I know that's like a really specific thing, but I'm trying to protect all of us of like saying, here's the standards, here's the things we're going to do. Um, I just want to make sure that we're doing, like, we're being responsible as a, as a council in sharing those funds and making sure everyone has accessibility to it. So I think for me, I would just like to see an addition, like, and we don't, I mean, I'm fine with whatever the council wants to say, obviously, because we speak as a group. But I think there should be a little bit more boundaries of like setting kind of bookends, like for the first six months of the, the year, like organizations can apply for and can be awarded $10,000 worth of sponsorship. Right? Then if there's money towards the end, but I just wonder, I just am concerned that we need to be, I don't know. I don't know if I'm making it. Go ahead, Counsel.
So we establish rules and there's always a beginning to everything that we do, right? Everything has a start and then we muddle our way through and we make adjustments as time goes by and we learn from the past, right? But organizations should not be responsible for our shortcomings. And I, as council and as the president of the city club, I am following the rules 100% and I take myself out of every single vote that applies anything to me at all. I am seeing a bias from the mayor because you just pulled out the city club who's been, has been awarded all of this money and you are being direct. It is not I that having, that's having the bias. This is, this is you bringing up all of the money that the city club is being awarded as the issue. So that is not a bias on my side. That's a bias on the mayor's side.
No, that's a concern. There's a difference between a biases when you have a bias and you act differently. I have not made a vote. I have not done anything. I'm having a discussion as a council. Like we are discussing something, so I'm being very transparent and saying, these are my concerns. Like there has not been a vote. I have not said anything negative. I'm saying this, this is what I'm seeing. This is my concern. And so I just want to make sure we're being fair. That's exactly what I said. It's not a bias.
It's unfortunate that, that somebody can't be on many groups in Forest Grove and donate thousands of hours and, and do everything right and still be faced with, with what we're going through right now after the rules have already been set. I agree with everything that Miles has changed, absolutely. Um, and I'm sorry that I didn't think through that to begin with. But the ship has sailed.
If we make the changes, they go into effect July 1st?
No, right now.
This, this resolution would have them going to effect.
Go into effect July 1st. Cause there still are funds that are available if somebody does apply during this.
I, I do have my hand up also. I'd like to speak when, uh, Mike is done.
Yeah, we haven't heard from Counsel Marshall yet, so.
I'm just looking at.
That's fine.
It, people have already applied. We're going to make them reapply for something that they've already been applied for. They've already been approved for this?
They haven't been approved. We've put it through a scoring mechanism and they've scored high enough to be awarded. But council has to vote.
And they were aware of the, the mi- the matrix of it beforehand when they applied, so I'm. I think, I think we need to continue, personally, I think we need to continue until with how it was set up previously, not change it until it takes into another, the next cycle of it.
There's, it's two separate discussions really, but go ahead, Jesse, if you can.
So, so currently, just to, to address Counsel Marshall's question. Excuse me, the resolution currently is written as effective immediately. If the council would like the program to go into effect as of July 1st, it would require an amendment to the resolution.
What I think the can, I think the confusion, and I'll go to Counsel Ewing first, since she's been waiting. But I think the confusion is talking about the projects that were on the consent agenda and the decision the council made then versus like we're mud, like muddying the waters. We have those projects, like what to do about those, which we already made a recommendation for. And then we have the recommendations to amend the pro, to amend the program. Right? Like there's, I think like when I'm hearing discussion, because it could be both, like you could say, hey, these people applied. We're going to do whatever, but we're also going to start this effectively, like or immediately. We don't have to wait till July to start it. Counsel Ewing.
So, uh, I am not comfortable with redesigning a program until after we have ident, we've already identified. They followed the rules and now basically because we weren't as clear or as, uh, succinct in what we wanted. Now we're going to make them reapply and go all through the process again. We have never done that before. When somebody applies and then we've tried the program, we see what needs to be fixed. We fix that in the next cycle. We do not fix, have never fixed it when we've already in essence approved, they've met the matrix, they literally have done all of their work that was required at the time of the application. And I can tell you as a fundraiser, I would be very distressed if I had an organization after I've submitted my grant, my event sponsorship, whatever it is, to come back to me and say, oh, guess what? We've decided now we need more rules in place and you're now going to have to meet these sets of rules. I would be incredibly disappointed with the process and I would be pretty publicly vocal about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel President Rippey.
Uh, so procedurally, this is how I think it should go down and Mariah can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, during the count consent agenda, we already decided to table those awards till next meeting. So the discussion right now should be only on this resolution and we can't amend it as Jesse said. But the discussion around when, if we award or not award is already moved to next meeting and we shouldn't be discussing that now. So parlementarily, we have one thing in front of us. The other one has been tabled till next, next meeting. We can decide how we want to implement this in time wise, but that's our decision now.
Thank you, Counsel President. Counsel Gethison.
Um, I'm not sure how to say this, but I, I would like to modify the resolution to begin at a different date, to July 1st. I think somebody mentioned it on, I think it's because that's when the next cycle begins.
Just make a motion to amend.
I make a motion to amend resolution number 2024 dash 06 to begin July 1st, 2024.
Parliamentary wise, I think there needs to be a motion to approve the resolution in a second and then you can make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Sorry.
I thought we had already done that, but we haven't.
No, we have not. I need a script too.
Okay, is there, um, any more questions for staff?
So I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and make the motion to pass resolution 2024 dash 06.
I'll second that.
Okay. Resolution number 2024 dash 06 has been moved by Counsel President Rippey and seconded by Counsel Valenzuela. Um, so let's open it up for discussion. So now you can do.
Okay. It's just weird to me that you approve it and then you modify it. It just doesn't make sense.
To amend.
I know, yeah. Um, I move to amend resolution number 2024 dash 06 to begin on July 1st, 2024.
Okay, to clarify, would you be amending section two?
I'm sorry.
Are you amending section two?
Section two?
Yep.
Thank you, yes.
There was, so that was moved by Counsel, Counsel Gethison, seconded by Counsel Valenzuela. Discussion on that before we vote. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Gethison?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes.
So in, another thing I want to bring up for discussion that I would like some feedback from the council about is, do we think there's a need to place like any sort of parameters about how much funding can go to one organization? Or do you think we just leave it open? There's $40,000. Yes, Counsel Gethison.
I think, and I can't recall when, where the money came from. These are TLT funds, right? Um, I think it might be a good idea to, to put a bumper at least annually. I'm not sure how easy it would be to do like a rotating, but it, it might be wise to do an, an annual cap per organization. Um, it's hard to say though, because again, it, it puts us into a situation where, oh, wow, somebody has a great idea and we really want to support it, but we can't because I've already maxed it out. So that's just something to keep in our minds, but it is only $40,000 a year. So I think that it would be wise to put some bumpers on it and if we need to change that, you know, next year or whenever, then that's something that we can do.
I agree. For any numbers you have, Counsel President Rippey.
My, you know, and, uh, as part of the discussion, and so my only concern is, is that if we look at, um, Forest Grove, their terms of events, sponsors, inventing, uh, is there are really right now, two major groups, the Chamber of Commerce and the City Club that sponsor events. The whole idea behind what we're doing is to increase tourism and bring events to, to put a cap on it. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that we're trying, we're not trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist yet. And, and Mike, you know, I'm not sure that, I, I don't think I really have a, a big problem with one of the, one or two or both of those, those groups. As long as there's those events are bringing in tourism dollars, why would we stop them from doing that? But because we're not going to give them additional sponsorship.
I'm just thinking of like holding space for like valley art and the chalk art festival, right? That's not hosted by city club or by the chamber, right?
Have they put in for that?
Well, they've used to put in for it through the CEPs. And so like part of the deal, if, I mean, I'm, part of my understanding of creating this program was for local nonprofits and smaller profits to not come to CEP for their annual fundraising. Like another way they could receive support from the city. So I just want to make sure, like I agree with everything you're saying, but like seeing how, it's only $40,000 and I just, I mean, like even if we just say 15,000 per entity, that's still two groups, Counsel Rippey, that's 30,000. And then we can even say like the last two months of the fiscal year, if there's funds left, we can reopen it or something. But I just want to make sure that we don't forget the smaller organizations, you know, like, you know, Friends of Historic Forest Grove, like have this here, like that doesn't happen a lot. So there's, there's, I also think there's sometimes, there's the historical things that people have done in this community that I don't want to get pushed out. And then there's those one offs, like people come in and say like, hey, we're going to have this event here. And it's maybe Pacific or it's maybe the school district, but it, I just want to make like as the saver in me, I just want to make sure we keep capacity.
So my response is that I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying and I understand what's going on. Um, I think what I'm more concerned about is trying to split the money between repeat requesters year after year and start up the events. So I, I think there's more validity of creating that kind of a difference. Because you'll get the same groups asking year after year for their operational money again. Where, and then the, the groups that want to start a new event, they're out at Nicole because these other groups have applied already. And, and we need to, we need to figure out how to bring additional events into town and not just fund the same ones all the time.
Okay, Counsel Ewing.
So, um, a lot of fundraisers that do sponsorships or a lot of, um, groups that do sponsorships, they do them A, every other year. And B, they have a different point structure or additional points to the rubrics that allow new and innovative groups to have points applied to them. Because it's new, they've, like our CEP, it's new, they've never been before us, uh, in the past. And so they get us five points more or whatever. But like I said, a lot restrict their, uh, applicants to every other year applying. So there's other mechanisms in being able to, uh, structure how those dollars go out, how, how we want them to go out than just this one shot. And I think that's something we should look at as the next year, as we see issues or changes that we want to do. Uh, we should have more serious conversation about really what are those sponsorships meaning to do? And how do we make sure that newer groups are also being recognized as well as do we need to do it every year for each sponsor or should there be a delay period? That's pretty much how sponsorships are set up.
So one thing as Counsel Ewing was talking, we just passed an amendment to not put this into effect until January 1st. So why don't we wait and do a work, I mean, July, what did I say? Okay. But why don't we wait and do a work session and figure out some of the stuff? Because maybe instead of like limiting groups, it's the type, like we look at types of events and do they really bring in tourism? I mean, I'm just saying like, instead of redoing this now and it's not going to go into effect until July. Like, why don't we wait and kind of have a little bit more time to work on it and see what else comes out of it? I think Counselor Gethison had her hand raised before.
Yeah, but my, my idea was similar, you know, as far as like Counsel Ewing was talking about extra points if you're, it's a new event. But maybe we, on the other hand, we put some money aside for new events, you know, just separate it that way. It's just another idea.
Okay, so procedurally, what needs to happen here is that Counsel Gethison needs to withdraw her amendment. Then I'll make a new motion. Then I'll make a new motion to table this.
I think you can table it with that motion on it.
We, we have to address the amendment first.
We already voted on that. We already voted on it.
We did?
Yeah, we're back to the main.
The amendment's been, been voted on and.
It's okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to table resolution 2024 dash 06 until.
We have a work session.
A, uh, May or June, I don't care.
Well, if it goes into effect, I mean, we have.
We have, we have up until the July, so.
Can I get clarification, please? Is, so is the motion to withdraw the resolution entirely and so these changes would not go into effect, the three changes that staff has briefed? Or is the motion to pass the resolution that's on the floor and then have a work session sometime post-July after these changes have gone into effect?
Can I make, I need clarification. My understanding was Counsel Gethison's motion said this wasn't going to go into effect until July 1st.
Correct, but it was, it was based on a motion to approve this resolution. The amendment to the motion to make it go into effect July 1st was passed. So now what's on the table is approval of this resolution to make these changes. And those changes would be to limit it to $2,000 if there's no sponsorship program. It would be to match the sponsorship at the highest level. And then the third change, if I recall, I'm looking at it right now. Uh, the third change would be that the organizer actually has to produce marketing materials. So in other words, if we do a sponsorship, that the event does have to have some kind of marketing materials that we are recognized in. We did have the program written such that we would be included in the materials, but we didn't think to think that some of the events may not produce materials at all and we would like to make sure they do produce materials. So those are the, those are what's included in this resolution.
I'm actually fine going forward with this resolution, but if we come back to look at it later, but.
But that's my point. We're going to probably add to this program. And my thought was just to do it with one resolution sometime before July. With, with these changes plus some additional ones that we've been talking about. Is that possible?
I think anything's possible. I think the changes that we. I think the changes that we were recommending tonight were kind of changes that were just unforeseen at the first promulgation of the program that were kind of like what I would characterize as, things that we made assumptions about, uh, that, that we later realized, weren't necessarily there. In other words, we were assuming that to become a sponsor, every event would have a sponsorship program. Not every event has a sponsorship program. So we wanted to clarify that if an event doesn't have a sponsorship program, that we're not going to give five thousand dollars for an event that doesn't have a sponsorship program. We want to make sure they have a program, number one, and if they do, then we'll match the highest level up to five thousand. But if not, then we'll only match the highest level that they are asking for as a sponsorship. So some of these I think we inherently kind of thought would be part of this program, but then we're finding out that they actually aren't because of the difference in events, whatever the events might be. It might be a new event, it might be, um, an event that has yet to put together a sponsorship program. So these are what I would characterize as kind of bigger changes, but we can, we can do whatever the council's wish is if they want to push these changes off until July, we can certainly do that. Um, if they want to put it off into one resolution, we can do that as well. It's up to the, up to whatever the council would like. I would say we've only had six applica, excuse me, we've had six applications. We have advertised the program pretty significantly, uh, with all of our nonprofits here in Forest Grove. So I think the awareness level is out there, but I also think that we probably have not received applications just because the events are mostly in the summer. Right? So in some cases, we've had nonprofits step up and say, hey, I'm going to do something in the summer. In other cases, I'm guessing that some nonprofits will probably put in probably within the next month or two as the event gets closer. So I hope that helps Councillor President, Councillor President Rippey.
I think we're, the biggest thing we're concerned on is trying to figure out if we're going to allocate a certain amount of funds for.
I'm sorry, Mike, I can't hear you.
Are we looking at trying to figure out if there's going to be an, a set amount for reoccurring events? And then a set amount for new event?
I think that's part of the discussion. I think, I think what, we want to kind of drill that down to get some details figured out.
That's what we're looking to try to do in May, June.
I guess another way to characterize it is we just rolled this out in November. And we kind of recognized it right off the top. There's a couple of things that we may want to change because we're just seeing that the program doesn't simply address those things right now, if that makes sense. Um, and those are the kind of bigger things. As far as some of these questions about recurring events versus non-recurring events, we've only got three months under our belt. And so I think some of these questions may not be addressed until we've probably had a year under our belt about what types of events did we get? How many events did we get? How much did we give out in the program? Those types of things. I will say that if this, if these changes are made, it will likely have a, a downward pressure on the amount of monies that are be giving, that are going to be given out for subsequent applications. Because right now, for example, if there's not a sponsorship program, we could award five thousand dollars. If there is a sponsor, or if there, or if, excuse me, or, um, so that's, that's one example. The other example could be if there is a sponsorship program, uh, and the maximum amount of the sponsorship is two thousand, they would be eligible for five thousand right now under the current guidelines. And so this would just cap it to, if we're going to sponsor an event, the most that we can, the, the most that the sponsorship would be, would be whatever that top tier is. If it's two thousand dollars, then it would be two thousand dollars, not five thousand dollars. Does that make sense? These are some of the things we just didn't anticipate when we rolled it out in November.
Councillor Ewing?
So, um, I, I'm getting confused here, I guess. So I have no problem with us waiting and putting together the revised amendment until July. I have no problem with us gathering more information from, um, Miles and, uh, going out and seeing how, and they're called sponsorship tiers. So when you're talking to your funders that are asking, that's the, uh, correct terminology. Anyway, I think that it is a new program. We're going to find changes, we're going to want to make changes after we've got a year under our belt. So I have no problem with us putting it off until July to make the three changes that staff has proposed. Uh, I think that they're good changes, I think that they're thought out changes. I just want to make sure that we're not imposing these changes on those who have already applied. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No other comments. So there's a motion from Councillor Rippey and a second from Councillor Valenzuela. Do we do, what do we do at this point? But was there a motion to table?
I guess just to clarify. If the council would like to table this motion, even though this amendment has passed, that would require a motion, a second and a vote to table it. And if you want, you could table it to a time certain. Tabling that nullifies the initial motion to approve the resolution. So if you would like to table it, you can do that. If you would like to, uh, uh, pass the resolution, you can do that too. I'm looking at Robert's Rule of Orders Quick Reference Guide and I think I'm reading it correctly. I hope so. I guess the other option would be to defeat the resolution and then make a motion to schedule it at a time certain for, for, um, consideration at a work session in August after there's been sufficient time upon which to have a program. That would be the other option. Either one, I think, has the same effect, which would be to not implement any of the changes until such time that there could be a work session sometime in the summer. Unless the council would like to make these changes now and you could still have a work session sometime in the summer. Is that clear as mud, Mayor? Sorry.
Yep. Okay, so what?
Only intent was to make it simpler for staff and I have failed miserably.
Thank you.
I, I say we, I say we delete the motion and wait until we have all of our ducks in row, have had an opportunity to look at what hap, is coming up with the, uh, August deadline and move it to a date certain. I feel that right now that I'm feeling pressured, uh, with not enough information to be able to really make a, um, good decision on this. So I would prefer to defeat the motion, put it for a time certain and have our work session so that we can get up to date and more familiar with really how fundraising sponsorships work.
Okay, so is there a motion on the, on the dais to table this?
I motion to table.
She's saying to defeat it. In other words, we take a vote on it and we get a majority of no's.
That'll be new.
Which is the same thing as, um, tabling it. Because then it goes away, we don't really have to worry about whether or not the groups who have already applied will be affected by changes that they did not apply to. And we then can do it a date certain rather than be pressed. I'm sorry, Tim.
I feel even more confused. I would rather table it because when I, I don't want to vote no on this. I think that the things that we need to change are legitimate. The only reason I'm okay saying, hey, we don't need to do this is because the amendment to, it was originally when this resolution was written, it was to immediately upon its enactment, right? So now it's not until July first, which gives us time. But to me, I don't want to say no to this because all of the things in there, I think, I mean, honestly, I'm kind of like, we could help double the events even in this fiscal year if we, you know, regardless of what we did with the consent agenda, if that came into effect. So I would rather table it.
I'll, I'll make the motion to table Resolution 2024 dash twenty-six to a, a date certain in June.
Can I propose July eighth?
July eighth.
Wouldn't that be into that new year though?
Wouldn't that be into the new fiscal year? I, because this says the first of July, we're, we're going to put it to the first of July.
Let's do May. Can we do May?
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Uh, we have, uh, time available on June, let's see, for May? Sorry, we have time available on May twenty-eighth or June tenth?
Pick a date. May twentieth.
May twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thanks.
Second.
Yeah.
Did you second it?
She could take it.
Okay. Council President Rippey moved that this Resolution two zero two four dash zero six be tabled until May twenty-eighth. And Councillor Valenzuela seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none. The motion passes or is adopted by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Okay, that was fun.
Miles is like, I'm out. Done.
Okay. Item G, Council Communications. Uh, Council President Rippey?
Yes, so very shortly, I attended the training for the, uh, HLB and Forestry Commission, the Planning Commission on just their public meetings and I thought it went very well. Uh, there were both, uh, people in the audience and on Zoom. Uh, and I think Brian, uh, handled it really well. I, I, I commend the staff for that, uh, kind of a session. The Fire Services Task Force did meet on the fifteenth of February. Uh, the consensus was to informally inquire of TVFNR on their willingness to assess the four jurisdictions involved to see whether they would be in a position to, what's the right word, assimilate in, uh, these jurisdictions into the district. So it's just an informal inquiry to see whether or not they're willing to assess. There's no formal request yet. That would only occur after each of the jurisdictions, boards and councils would approve it. So this is just an informal thing. So our next meeting is going to be sometime in March to get feedback from, uh, Chief Gearing about that informal inquiry. And then, uh, we can then bring it to council for a decision on which way to go. And then the last thing is there was a, I attended a National League of Cities Transportation Committee meeting online. There was discussion around some more funding about, uh, about funding that we are already aware of. So there wasn't really anything new to add to, to that. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thanks. Councillor Gustafson?
Okay, so I went to the PAC meeting for the first time and let me tell you, that was so much fun. I know so much about plinths now, it's not even funny. And I hear that it was, it's Mayor Wenzel's favorite word, so.
I love that.
That's a little bit of trivia. We, we talked a lot about the plinth, we talked, um, just a, a lot about, um, PAC in general. But they had a number of questions and I didn't really know, um, should I bring those up now? Is this something, okay. Um, so one of the questions, and some of them were like, I don't really know if we made definite decisions, I couldn't recall. Where did we fall on the whole boards and commissions being able to fundraise?
My understanding from the work session was that they have funding through the TLT and they could only fundraise for a large capital project. Like a very big public art, like a specific, you are fundraising to create a huge mural here, right? Like it has to be one capital project and they can fundraise for that. But other than that, there's not fundraising.
Can anyone confirm that? I mean, do we have that?
It was in the work session. Go ahead.
Just to add to that, that was the discussion that occurred during the work sessions. The thing that got formally amended into the council rules reads as follows. Boards and commissions may not, excuse me. Uh, I'm looking at the wrong section. I thought I had the right one. Okay, here it is, I'm sorry. Boards and commissions shall not fundraise unless authorized by the council.
Okay. And then the other one, uh, they asked about TLT funds, so we're saying that they are able to use TLT funds? And what process do they use?
So the, the program that was passed by the city council was to allocate, and it was a certain percentage of the capital project fund out of the TLT, but half of the tourism capital program would go toward the inst, what's characterized as installation art. Um, as the mayor kind of described, those are installation projects. Approximately half of that would be approximately ten thousand dollars a year. It wasn't a specific monetary amount, but it was fifty percent of twenty percent.
They were thinking that's what it was, but they couldn't recall.
Right, it's approximately ten thousand and it would be, that would be done through the, through the budget process, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the third question was, are they able to still give out mini grants?
There's, there's been no mini grants that have been awarded through the CEP process. And so I'm not sure where they would get mini grant funding, but there is no, there is no mini grant funding.
Are they thinking of taking that ten thousand dollars from TLT and using it for mini grants?
They didn't ask about that.
I think they did three fundraisers last summer. So I'm wondering, they have a balance in there. I'm wondering if they're like thinking with the money that they already had. Like, right, if they, so their mini grants are, you know, just people come and like, I think they gave a mini grant for the Forest Grove Art Show, right? Like there's a, I think they gave it to chalk art or.
So I think the question, I'd, I'd like to send a question back to them. For them to clarify, what do they mean by mini grants and where do they think they're getting the money from?
Okay, well, when they say mini grants, it's a five hundred dollar grant for, um, supplies for artists when they want to do things in Forest Grove, so paint.
Well, where do, where do they think they're getting the funding from? Because.
I can definitely ask that.
I guess just to maybe.
Sound reasonable?
Yeah.
And to maybe clarify, the, the TLT monies were not envisioned to do mini grants, it was envisioned for installation art.
Yeah.
Um, and then the second thing I guess I would add is that previously the mini grants were funded by the Community Enhancement Program. And that has not funded mini grants for, I think, a couple of years now. And then last, I don't believe there's any council rule language pertaining to that, but that's the history of it.
Okay, that's, that's all the questions they had. I'll clarify on the, where the funds are coming from and let them know the answers on the other, the other ones. But, uh, they're, they're, oh, and they, they're getting ready for the Arts Festival. And that was one other thing that they mentioned was we talked about subcommittees. And that subcommittee was cut because we had decided subcommittees weren't going to be okay unless the council approved them. This was a project in flight.
Yeah, that was already.
And so they, they stopped the subcommittee because we said no subcommittees, even though it was already in flight and that they're struggling now because there's, you know, disconnection because they can't have that subcommittee anymore. So they're asking for approval from the council to go ahead and, and reestablish that subcommittee so that they can finish the work on this project that's in flight.
I mean, I support that. I'm a little confused that, because I was on the, I'm the, I was the liaison during conversations and I told Celine, I told them like that any subcommittee that was approved by staff before, because that, Councillor, Councillor Gustafson is correct, that started happening months before the subcommittee's recommendation, before any action by the council. So I don't know why that was ever cut. Like, and I don't, and it's kind of frustrating, like this, you. I'll just speak right to that.
I hear what you're saying, but there can be an interpretation there that, that this is an ongoing subcommittee and not for just this one festival. And, and I would, and again, subcommittee meetings are public hearing, public, public meetings, public records laws, all of that staff time. And so it, I would, I, the most I would do is approve a set number of meetings for this festival and then that's it. If they can't get the work done in a set number of meetings, then, uh, and, and it's just for this one festival, not an ongoing, how we interpret it. That's the most I would approve, but the rest of you guys can obviously overrule.
Um, I, I think that they should be able to do what they need to do to finish the festival only because it's going to take work for them. I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand. It's going to take work for them to put together everything to figure out how much time and meetings they need and it's already almost there, you know, we're almost there. So I, I would like to see a consensus on just letting them put it back together for this festival, which is this year.
Yeah.
And then that's it.
It's, and at my understanding is it's five different arts, like it's first Wednesday and they, and so I, I agree with.
I hear that, but, but they could say, well, we need to do thirteen or fourteen, fifteen meetings, subcommittee meetings and every one of those has to be staff supported. I, you know, I've just.
So would you be comfortable with them doing? So would you be comfortable with them doing, having five subcommittee meetings to get this going? I mean, what's your number? Give me your number. I'm asking council.
When, when's the festival, you know?
It's, it's multi-day, so each first Wednesday, starting in May, at Market, there, it, there's a festival, right? So that, so it goes through the summer for five different months, so it's not just one big festival.
There's like visual art there, right? Like, they have different things-
Performance art, it's visual art, it's, but it's happening on Market Day.
Music, right?
You know?
I can find out more information and come back.
You know, they could have, they could have a subcommittee meeting that lasts for five hours and get it all done in one meeting, or they can do 30 minutes.
But they have partnerships.
So I know you don't like to be micromanaging, I don't either, but I also know the other end of it, the other flip side of that coin, is they can, they can, they can have a dozen or more meetings, because, anyway, so what, it's very difficult to give them a specific number, but it's going to have to be something that staff can support.
So I can go back to them?
Or you can say, as long as staff supports the subcommittee meeting, like, come up with a number, if staff supports it, like, ask Colleen though, to see, Colleen also needs to give some information, because she's the staff liaison, so she needs to help us.
We, we can bring you back a more acute scope of what that would entail, so that the council could be more informed on what you'd like to do.
I think that's what we're, what we want when they're going to start a subcommittee anyway, like, moving forward, so. Okay, I'll get more information. That's all I have, sorry it took so long.
It's okay, can I get a motion to extend the meeting to sign 33? Yeah, remember last time?
I move to extend the meeting by 20 minutes at the most, 10, 10 minutes at the most.
Like, you guys took 10 minutes, just the two of you, not throwing shots, but, I'm like, let's be real.
We'll just do it fast.
I have a motion to extend the meeting by 20 minutes. Is there a second? Moved by Council Gustafson, seconded by Council President Rippey. Okay, so we're going to keep moving. Oh, wait, we have to all agree?
Yes, all agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We'll do it fast.
Yeah, there's a no by Council Valenzuela. So, Council Marsh, Marshall?
Um, so once, uh, I was on the forestry meeting, um, they voted for a new chair, um, it's going to be Justin Marble.
Finally.
Um, they went over, um, just, um, the tree removal that they're getting a permit for on 16, or 1604 Birch Street, I guess it's a tree that they had to get approval for. Um, they're also going over, they're going to reach out to Parks and Rec for the Arbor Day for planting of the tree, they want to figure out what park they should be planting at. They had the Emerald Ash Border update, basically, um, they're still in hibernation right now, so there's not much information they have. Um, I believe they're going to be reaching out to the high school, um, to do some testing on the trees that are closest to the baseball field in that area, because I think there are some trees that they, they can use to get information on that, so. As far as that, that's basically what I got from them. And then, Parks and Rec was a little bit lengthier, um, they were going over replacement, um, the Hazel Still Park. They were also going over, they've added, um, they had a handful of graffiti and, um, um, stuff happening over at the, um, site park, I think it is, and so they've added, um, game cams, and so they're not getting that anymore, so that's kind of a good thing. They have, uh, the maker of the, some of the playground equipment, and in Abby's playground, they have coming out two fixed breaking system inside the carousel, and I guess it actually didn't need it, it was actually something from a, like a, a different area needed, that needed that breaking system, but here it doesn't need it, so they're either going to look at replacing it or taking it off, so. Um, they did lifeguard certification, they, um, for February, March, it was, it's completely full, 10 participants, so they're going to have a handful more lifeguards. During spring break, they'll be hoarding additional, um, public swim times from 1 to 3 every day during that time break, or that timeframe. As far as, they're looking at doing the, some, um, summer recruiting, opening in March for the Recreation Aides for Camp Grove, coming up there, and then they have, they're planning underway for Camp Grove's return, as well as Skyhawks and Playwell, coming up soon.
Thanks.
So, let's see, Sister City meeting, um, was a couple of weeks ago, so the students' delegation, they're planning to be here October 20th to November 1st, that was not a good time, because they didn't, couldn't come in the summer, and then they're talking about maybe a smaller adult delegation, it's on hold currently. They're also asking us to pay for their mayor, um, so they're requesting reciproc- Yes, that's, we're like-
You're good, no worries.
Yeah, um, so that's all in talks right now.
So they want, hey, let's, yeah, so Jesse can make sure he's, so they would like us to pay, they don't know when the adult delegation-
Correct.
But when the adult delegation comes, they would like the city of Forest Grove to pay for Mayor Sausage and Plinkett.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the youth group and the adult group is not coming at the same-
No, they're not.
And then the, the date of the student group is good.
The, they, um, I suppose so, yes.
October 28th or November 2nd.
It was, um, Nicole that relayed the information, so, and she does the communications currently, so I don't know, you know, we don't, let's just-
Have they decided when the adult delegation is coming?
No, or if, apparently.
And then they want us to pay for the mayor's ticket?
Yeah.
We've only done that on special occasions. It's not something we're going to do.
No, I know, so that was an issue. I guess the, um, tickets are quite expensive now, and because of Taylor Swift for some reason, and then, and then also the, um, um, Olympics in France this summer.
Lights and hotels, yeah.
So, um, that was a lot of the issue, apparently, so.
The adults can't come in October when kids-
I don't know, they were going to get back to that, that's, you know, it's, it's kind of been, yeah, confusing, apparently, so, back and forth, but anyway.
The increase of cost and everything is a reality, I can understand the pressures to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that maybe the committee ought to consider is, instead of every other year, come up with a different schedule, like, maybe it's every third or fourth year that we do these exchanges, instead of just every single year.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just, it's a thought, it's not-
That's a good thought, really. And then, um, I was, I got the email from, um, Mike about WACA, WCCCA, and, but I didn't realize it didn't have the link on it when I went to get on, so I did not attend, so I'll defer to Jesse on that one. So, the, the WACA meeting, yeah, I didn't make it because it didn't have a link, so, and nobody got me one at the last minute, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ewing?
So, uh, the Forest Grove Senior Community Center, uh, had asked about, had concerns about the utility increases, and whether or not that would apply to them. Uh, staff got back with me and said, no, that we did not do a set amount, so their, uh, the utility increases will not be burdened by them. The, I had mentioned during retreat that their biggest fundraiser is bingo, and that, uh, in my opinion, and looking at the finances, is not going to be sustainable for them. Uh, also, uh, they are taking over the, uh, tree lighting, uh, from the chamber, they'll be taking that over, and as more information comes out, I'll tell you about that. Uh, they do have concerns about the term community center. Uh, mainly is that programs to bring in for community-type events are very costly, so we're going to be having a much deeper conversation about how we can grow it just from being the Forest Grove Senior Center to what it means, and I think as we go through the recreational enhancement, uh, we'll have a little bit more information to give them as well. They would also like to, uh, mention that they are going to be needing some volunteers to help with the, uh, tree lighting, as well as, uh, they're also doing a talent contest this year. So anybody wanting to do that, and I'm spreading it, you know, to our public groups as well, want to help support the senior center, uh, please connect with them. They've also asked a question on, to, on whether or not they can post on the Forest Grove website, uh, i.e., do we have newsletter space? Are they able to, uh, post events? What, what is their, uh, guidance on how they can, uh, use the Forest Grove website? Also, uh, they wanted to know if there would be room in the website to do a newsletter for them, or a space for them to post? If not that, a link to their newsletter. Uh, also, uh, EEC, they have not done their, uh, elections for Chair and Vice Chair yet, uh, they haven't met, uh, last month, so that will have to come, uh, this month. Uh, they also wanted to ask, and I reached out to, uh, staff, Jesse, and asked this as well, they want to put the ATM after the retreat. Uh, Jesse found out that there's nothing in their bylaws that says specifically when they have to do, uh, the ATM, just that it has to include the comp plan as part of their, um, program. So, uh, I think that you'll hear from them that they are going to want to move that ATM until after our retreat is finished, and we come out with the goals and objectives so that they can be, uh, lined up with those goals and objectives, and make sure that the conversations are focused on those goals and objectives. Uh, EEC would also like, uh, space on the newsletter for current topics that are going on, so these are some of the things that, um, they're asking and wanting more information on. Is there any input on the newsletters, or is that something that, um, I need to work forward with, um, staff on, uh, for the website?
I think that's a staff decision, I don't think council really chooses what's on, um, but I would like to, to, to say with CCE, that, um, when you're, when you're helping them, or when they're planning the ATM, that Ride Connection and Grove Link would like to be a part of that ATM, and that, um, as far as topics go, I would be willing to help and support with the Civics 101, or How to Run for Office, like, some sort of, if they're going to do something like that. You've brought that up a few times, Council Ewing, I think it's a really good idea, there's an election coming up in November, and just the process of going to the county election office, the signet, like, just kind of running through all that stuff, I think is a really good topic for CCE to take.
Okay, that's wonderful input, I will pass that forward to them. I think that that is, um, pretty much everything that I have that we need to with the time. I also asked staff, and I believe that our attorney is looking into this as well, to bring forward a conversation about service animals versus companion animals. Service animals have to go through a whole deluge of training shots, but companion animals are a totally different conversation, because they're not certified, they're not managed, and, um, the senior center had a case that came up where somebody wanted to bring their companion animal in, and they did not know how to respond, uh, as to what the city and their buildings are willing to accept. So I believe that Ashley is going to look into that a little bit more. People are, uh, designating everything from peacocks to, you know, uh, pythons as, uh, their support animals, so I think we need to get ahead of this, especially since the senior center has already kind of gone through that experience. I also wanted to mention that after nine years of service, uh, I did not reapply for, uh, the Washington County Homeless PAC, uh, I think that it's, after nine years, it's time for me to step aside. It appears that our homeless conversation is, uh, really developing well. We have new people who are, uh, experienced in these programs, so just to let you know that I did, uh, not reapply for that board position. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Council Ewing. Council Valenzuela?
Okay, friends. All right, so I have, um, I attended the library commission meeting, and, uh, one important event that we have coming up, but of course I need to clarify the date, it's a gathering of friends in April, and many of us, including myself, did not attend, and it's very important that we do. So it's one of my goals to be bugging you constantly, uh, to make sure that most of us, uh, do show up. I understand that there are things that happen, I was sick that weekend, um, when that gathering happened, uh, but it's very important for us to be present. Uh, also, uh, the other news from the library is that the bath partition, uh, was finally approved, and I believe the bid, yes, went out last week, or was due last week, uh, one of the two, uh, so, uh, things are looking good at the library, uh, of course. Uh, I do have a special announcement this coming Thursday. Um, at Centro Cultural, this is not a fundraiser, raising activity or anything like that, but at 5:30, we're going to have a very special event. We've had a group of Latino kids, uh, from the high school, from, uh, Forest Grove High School, uh, Aloha, uh, Hillsboro, who have participated for over a year. They have been attending workshops to learn about the Emerald Ash Border, and they have developed a management plan for the trees, uh, around the area. And, uh, they have learned, you know, from using an Excel to measuring the height of a tree, and they have been so engaged, and we are so immensely proud of them for committing to attending on Saturdays for three or four hours to learning, you know, how to use a computer, how to develop a, a program, eh, and about the Emerald Ash Border, what it is, and going out there on the field and looking at the trees, and, you know, looking for all the indications where a tree, whether a tree is infested or not, they have done great work, and they're going to present their work on Thursday at 5:30 at Centro Cultural. Uh, we have invited friends from different organizations that work in the field of environmental stewardship. Um, and I do want to mention, uh, that Toilet and Soil/Water Conservation District and the Backyard Habitat Certification Program staff are the ones that provided the instructions, supported, uh, this journey, uh, as well as the Oregon Department of Forestry, and of cour, of course, Metro with funding, uh, to make this happen. So this is a very exciting week for us, and, um, yes, I, I wanted to make that announcement to you.
Thank you. City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, a couple of things here real quick. Um, as Council Valenzuela mentioned, the library partition and the restrooms, they were released for bid, so they're being advertised right now. Um, once we get those bids back, we'll report back to council and hopefully secure a contract. Kind of similarly, Site BRFP is also being advertised, and the 2040 Vision and Action Plan is also being advertised. Um, we recently conducted interviews to select a consultant for the Emergency Operation Plan, so that's also in progress. Uh, mark your calendars for March 4th, that's the first meeting for the Eastside Park Neighborhood Meeting, it's going to be located at NAMM's, it will be bilingual, refreshments and childcare will be provided, so if anyone in the neighborhood of the Eastside Park on 19th has any comments for concept design, that's, that's the place to go. So if anyone in the neighborhood of the Eastside Park on 19th has any comments for concept design, that's, that's the place to go.
At March 4th or March 1st?
March 4th, sorry. Um, I, I'll have to get back to you on the time. I didn't write down the time. I believe it's in the evening, but let me double check, so. Brian Poehl, our Community Development Director, was recently appointed to the Department of Land Conservation and Development Commission's Goal 9 Committee. This is a fairly unique, and I would arguably say a pretty important appointment. Goal 9 is this whole issue about industrial lands, um, and this is a pretty germane issue, especially with Senate Bill 4 that passed a couple of sessions ago. So congratulations to Brian. The city will have representation on that committee. And then last, uh, the good news with regard to the EV bike incentives program is that we've processed 226 applications so far. It's been an enormously popular and successful program. The downside, however, is we're getting close to running out of monetizing our clean fuel credits for the program. We've spent $188,000 so far on the program, which is great. But due to the declining funds, we are looking at implementing some changes here soon that would still keep the rebate, but it would reduce the rebate. Right now, the rebate is, um, $400 for a single bike, $1,000 for a family. To try and make this more sustainable, we're looking at reducing that by about half. So we'll have an announcement that will come out probably sometime soon about that, but we're still going to have the rebate. The program's still going to be there. It's just due to declining funds on our monetization, we're going to have to cut it back for now, so. With that, that's all I have. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Okay, it's 9:53, so I have three things I'd like to say, but our motion called it at 9:53, so. Be in the journey. What am I supposed to do? Like, the motion said 20 minutes, so.